Hanford Riverdale.
Riverdale, Leighton.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for joining us for the meeting of the Tulare County Board of Supervisors. At this time, please rise with us as we salute the flag of our great country, followed by a moment of silence. We will be led today by Supervisor Chuckley.
Please join me in saluting our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, MBE. My moment of silence was a little bit longer because Chuckley's dog started barking in the background.
They're hungry.
Sorry for the long moment of silence. Anyone else that has their phone on, please put them on silent. Thank you Supervisor for that reminder. We will now take up Board of Supervisors Matters, and we will begin with Supervisor Ennis.
Oh, you caught me by surprise.
I like doing that, Mr. Chairman.
We had our Upper Thule, I mean our Lord Thule meeting on Lake Success yesterday. There's eighty-four thousand acre feet in there. It's about a foot, foot and a half up on the sandbags. The good thing about the sandbags is they had to run another study. The Corps is, the Corps is good at studies. To bring you up to speed on studies, the Corps, over the last thirteen years, has spent sixty million dollars studying Lake Success. Now, the original project to raise the spillway was twenty-eight million dollars, and we studied it for thirteen years and spent sixty million dollars. Isn't that amazing? Thank you, federal government and the Corps of Engineers. So, that study for the sandbags did help us because that moves us closer to getting a DSAC IV rating, which is going to move us into the construction phase of success. If everything goes right, within the next two years, hopefully, we'll be going to construction. The new price of widening and raising the spillway is close to forty million dollars. So, it went from twenty-eight up to close to forty million dollars in the last thirteen years. So, we've been a loser on both ends of that deal. I want to thank the sheriff and his group and his task force, along with the Forest Service and BLM people and whoever worked on eradicating the marijuana plants on Blue Ridge. There was close to fifty thousand plants pulled out of there, and we figured that that's just a small portion of what's up there, but in the federal lands. But thanks to the sheriff and his task force working with everybody in the Forest Service, we did eradicate close to fifty thousand plants up there. So, thank you for doing that, and we appreciate it. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ennis. Supervisor Chuckley.
I just want to share that last week, we had our long-awaited first meeting of our homeless task force, and it was a very good meeting. We had some, we have some great partners, great stakeholders. It was about a two-hour-long meeting. We're going to be holding the meetings monthly for at least the first six months since we have some momentum going. As I keep calling it, a meeting of the minds. People from the Homeless Alliance, from law enforcement. We have folks from the faith-based community, CSET. So, what we're looking at is bringing everybody to go together so we're all on the same page, and we can reach out and know what resources there are out there. And as I always say, and I'm going to say it every time, is we're not going to eradicate homelessness from our community, from our county, but we are going to be able to identify those who do not want to be homeless and find the resources for them to be. And I was actually surprised with the folks from the Homeless Alliance. There are actually, they have vouchers for folks to be placed and to be paid for their housing. A couple in Tulare, but there are no, there is no housing available for them. So, that's something that's really going to be looked at highly, working with the mental health community and all. So, very excited about this finally getting off the ground and moving forward with all of our partners. That's it.
That's an exciting thing. Thank you for the highlight.
It is. Yes.
Supervisor Crocker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On this past Saturday, I attended the Three Rivers Hot Dog Festival. What a great event that was. We had, I was able to preside over a competition amongst the National Park Service Fire Employees and Cal Fire, as they did a traditional bucket brigade. And I'm pleased to announce that the National Park Service won, and it was a close competition. We also had a competition where the kids that were present participated, and they also beat Cal Fire. So, I don't know what that says about the situation. It was a great event that helped to get, generate proceeds for the Three Rivers Fire Station, to help them out with additional needs that may arise throughout the year that isn't normally covered in their budget. And so, it was a nice little event hosted by the Three Rivers Historical Museum. This Friday, we have, I will be attending the San Joaquin Valley Water Infrastructure Authority as Supervisor Worley is out, and this is the Joint Powers Authority that's working towards getting Temperance Flat built. We have a deadline for Proposition 1 dollars to be, for an application to be submitted by the middle of August, August 14th. So, that's coming up very quickly, and this will be the, I believe, the last meeting before that deadline. And so, this is, it's a critical junction to make sure that we're on pace, to make sure that we have everything, all our ducks in a row, that we've got all the things figured out, to make sure that we can get the Prop 1 funds that were approved by the state of California, where Temperance Flat could be getting up to a billion dollars in those state bonds. And so, that's, things have been progressing very well in that fashion. Also, that night, I will also be attending the Ag One Dinner, which is a booster club for Fresno State's College of Agriculture that benefits valley-wide agricultural students, many scholarships and research opportunities at Fresno State to make sure that we're continuing to be the leading agricultural region in the world.
Thank you, Mr. Fresno State. Go Dogs! We will now move on. I will conclude Board of Supervisors Matters this morning, going over a few things. Today, there's an ad hoc committee meeting of the Tulare County Board of Supervisors and the Board of Retirement regarding the funding stability of TESERA and our retirement system. I'm looking forward to participating in that ad hoc meeting and sharing a lot of what we've been doing as a county with TESERA, as they are their own separate legal entity, but I do serve on both boards. We also have a retirement board meeting this Wednesday at eight-thirty, and then Tulare County Audit Committee meets on Thursday at ten a.m., and then on Friday, there's a meeting of the San Joaquin Valley Insurance Authority. That takes place in Fresno at one-thirty. I also wanted to highlight an event that's actually taking place right now that I was invited to attend, but obviously, I'm unable to do so. That is a Second Skilled Labor Construction Program Graduates Career Fair that is taking place at Clovis Community College in Clovis. If anybody is interested, that fair is taking place today and provides a lot of resources for recent graduates. So, I wanted to make sure I made mention of that. And then, the last thing that I wanted to talk about is I did want to ask staff or direct staff, we've all been talking about a lot of groundwater and surface water issues, obviously, during a year of flood like this year. But one of the things I think that Tulare County really needs to look at for the interim period between now and groundwater sustainability implementation a few years from now is looking at preventing groundwater exportation from our county. We do need to look at that, and I think that that should come forward in the form of an ordinance at some point. I know that Kings County is also looking at that at this time. So, I'd like to get staff to start working on something to at least cover us from the interim period between now and GSA implementation. I think that would be a very beneficial thing. That concludes Board of Supervisors Matters. We are now going to move on to take up item two on our agenda, and that is public comments. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on today's agenda. Public comment can and will be limited to three minutes per speaker, a total of fifteen minutes. I have one request from Mayor of Tulare Carlton Jones to speak. I'd like to call forward Mayor Jones at this time. Please state your name and address for the record.
I am Carlton Jones, 2221 South Tammerack, Tulare, California. And with me, you want to introduce yourself?
I'm Clara Bernardo. I'm from Tulare, California.
All right. So, thank you for your time, Board. I'm here to talk to you about the street drug spice, and spice is a synthetic marijuana that was developed on federal funds by a scientist at Clemson University back in 2005. That has now become one of the most dangerous and popular street drugs in our area and probably affecting a lot of students all over the world. The city of Tulare and the city of Visalia has made the sales of this drug illegal in smoke shops, and what's sad is that residents from Tulare and Visalia can travel a short distance to a county area and still purchase this drug. I am here to plead with you to research and make this drug illegal in the county area also. It's one of the strongest components to our, the mental health situation, to our homeless population. The problem with spice is that it has twenty times the effect of the HTC in marijuana. It has twenty times the addictive personality, and it's cheap. So, one bag of bottles or cans to a recycling shop in our homeless community can get high. One of the, it's called the zombie drug. It's cheap, and if you've ever seen someone on spice, the withdrawals are worse than heroin. And like most addiction, it crosses all barriers, whether it's rich, poor. It doesn't matter what race you are or where you're from. Once you get on it, it's developed to get you addicted pretty fast. Personally, I've seen a lot of kids, very young, high school-aged kids, that ever, whatever the reason for their depression, will turn to this cheap, like, very accessible drug, and once you're on it, it's a world of hurt for not only the kids, but their entire families. So, I'm going to let Clara speak, and that's my plea to you. I want to work with you to clean this up, and if you want to get a grip on your homeless population, helping them get off this drug is a good place to start.
I was kind of going online and doing some research, and then I thought, I don't know why I'm doing that, because it's happening in my own home. I have a nineteen-year-old son, it was the second time in rehab, and I apologize, you guys. And I actually wanted to hand out something if you guys have not seen spice and what it looks like, and this isn't from the internet. This is actually what I found in my home prior to sending him off to rehab. I even remember talking to his school, because my other son goes to school, and he was having issues because of his older brother having the problems at home. And when I talked to the counselors about what's going on in our home, they had no clue what spice even was. But yet, when I showed them things such as like the flavored cigars and stuff, the actual head counselor said, "Well, I've been seeing that on campus. I just didn't know why." You know, so this is very common. It's about five dollars a bag. I mean, it's really easy to get, and a lot, the reason that a lot of the teenagers are even getting it, a lot of the athletic kids are even getting it, is because it's hard to trace in drug tests. And so, now that kids are actually being drug tested for sports and stuff in school, they're turning to this. And it's a quick, it lasts about ten to fifteen minutes of a quick high, and then they come down. I remember chasing my son throughout the city, and we had called the police officers to try to come and help us to at least just kind of contain him in an area. When the police officer got there, he actually called his captain and said, "I don't know why I'm getting called out. It just looks like a mother and son fight," not even realizing what had happened prior to that. Why? Because he was already coming out of it. The problem is, it's like, because he's coming out of it, within minutes, he wants to do it again. He's probably totaled his, he's totaled his truck twice. He's had really bad health issues. He's lost probably thirty pounds within just months. It's a very, very addictive drug. All we've seen is this really good sports kid just go downhill after that. I mean, and it was more because, you know, because he didn't want to get tested. We were doing everything we could as parents, you know, testing our teenagers, doing what we could. This was a way for him to still do what he needed to do and not be tested. This stuff is worse than heroin. I mean, it is, because it's so easy, so easy to get. It's not only in the smoke shops, but it's been on the streets, too. And I think just more people need to be aware of it, and we need to get rid of it as much as we can, or ban it as possible.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Colin.
Oh, just real quick. Her son is a story that has just a toolbox of resources that are going to help him. He's one of the kids that I coached when he was younger. So, just her cry for help pulled together a lot of people, and that's still a struggle. But there's so many kids that don't have a family who can afford to send them to rehab, don't have coaches that are still in contact with them. I would say, I've been coaching for fifteen years, and about twenty percent of the kids that I've coached that had a bright future ahead of them are addicted to this drug. Our residents in Tulare will go to early Martin Pixley and bring that drug back. Visalia and Tulare have done our part to make it illegal, and we're holding our smoke shops accountable, and we just asked that the county would look into it and hopefully do the same thing.
Absolutely. Thank you for bringing it to our attention. That was, like I told you yesterday, I had no idea. So, I can assure you that we will look into it and do our part. Thank you. All right. Are there any additional requests for public comment? Please come forward. State your name and address for the record.
Hi, Miley Mulcohnian, 2815 Southwest Street, Visalia. Yes, I, regrettably, I was unable to attend the last regular meet, your last regular meeting, and that was when the subject of the Giant Sequoia National Monument was addressed. I realize that yesterday was a significant deadline regarding that, but I still have one question. This has been the topic of discussion among citizens quite a bit in the last two weeks, and one question keeps coming up, and I would like to see if it can be answered here. And I'm sorry that Supervisor Worley is not in attendance right now, because the question is, Supervisor Worley made a career in the wood processing and logging industry, as a lawyer for them, hired by them, and representing them in many capacities. To us laypeople, that seems like a distinct conflict of interest, and we are wondering how Supervisor Worley was not required to recuse himself from that matter. So, I worked in Washington, DC for a while, and the letter that was sent by the Board just reminds, I hate to say this, but it reminds me of things I saw in Washington that were actually written by industry people and then signed by legislators. My request as a citizen is for county council to make a public, to issue a public explanation of why he was not required to recuse himself from that matter.
Okay. Do we have any additional public comment?
Yes, my name is Katie Wagner. I live in Visalia, 93277. So, this last session, on the subject of the Sequoia National Monument, we had at least forty people here. We had twenty people sign up to speak. We've had dozens of letters coming, everyone saying the same thing. Don't reduce the size of the national monument from three-hundred-twenty-eight thousand acres down to ninety thousand acres. You said again and again, that's not part of the letter. That's not something we're considering. That's a Kern County issue. And at the very last second, Mr. Worley brought that up, and then there was a vote, and within seconds, you voted to recommend reducing the size of the national monument from three-hundred-twenty-eight thousand acres down to ninety thousand acres, after that was something that you said was not even in consideration. We had, every person who came up to speak on that topic said, "Don't do that." I told you specifically that my concern was that the guys, that the word hazard trees and the active management and hazard tree removal, that these phrases have been used in the past in the Burton Timber Sale, Saddle Timber Sale, Frog Sale, White Sale, Ice Sale, in the Lake Grove and Grant Grove, Porterville, Hot Springs area. These were all sales, and that was used to say, "No, no, no. We're just trying to reduce wildfire," and then they used that wood for timber, for logging, for sales. They made money off of this. This is my concern, that this is going to happen, and especially with the Wilderness Protection, Wilderness Backcountry Access Act put forward by Senator Nunez and Senator McCarthy. It was their policy, they put it forward, to open up areas and roads in that area for logging, for industry. I fear that is exactly what's happening. This is nothing to do with protecting the forest from wildfires. This is all about increasing roads for industry and logging and timber sales. And we asked Mr. Worley to recuse himself because he had been an attorney, a lobbyist for the forest industry for years. Not only did he not recuse himself, he put the motion forward, and then you voted on it. I'm really disappointed, and that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Do we have any additional public comment?
Good morning. My name is Ernest Garcia. I also, I'm very disappointed that Mr. Worley is not here. I am a retired professional wildlife biologist with thirty years, over thirty years of U.S. Forest Service experience in forestry wildlife and fire management. I worked on some of the biggest timber forests in the world, Washington State, and the state of Montana, the entire southeastern region, and in the Peruvian Amazon. I disagree with the premise that reducing the monument acreage would better protect the Giant Sequoia groves, other resources, and public safety. I do, however, agree with employing active forest management to meet these objectives, but believe such management does not, I repeat, does not require the harvest of green trees to achieve them. Instead, the solution should be non-commercial thinning from below, followed by prescribed burning, underburning. Such activities are permitted under the Antiquities Act. They are an effective, protective, science-based management strategy that would help protect the groves and surrounding communities while improving forest health and promoting ecosystem restoration. The maintenance of green trees and the integrity of sequoia ecosystems is paramount now more than ever due to relative scarcity owing to the unprecedented rates of conifer mortality caused by sustained drought and subsequent insect infestation. Green tree timber extraction would exacerbate the impacts to forest dwelling species as well as aquatic and semi-aquatic species such as the golden trout and amphibians like the endangered mountain yellow-legged frog, which would be more vulnerable to further reductions in forested habitats and the shading required to maintain sub-lethal temperatures. While wildfires can burn catastrophically hot due to the high fuel loadings and the low fuel moistures, the sequoia groves have and can continue to benefit from fire, as evidenced by the meadow and the hidden fires which occurred last fall. These were lightning ignitions that were essentially managed as low-intensity underburns with very, very positive, desirable response. The Giant Sequoia is a fire-associated species. Fire thins out overstocked trees and can reduce the occurrence of ladder fuels which carry ground fires into the canopy. Fire also benefits sequoia seedlings, which require lots of light and can significantly reduce competitive non-sequoia species and overall fuel loadings which have increased precipitously in recent decades due to the Forest Service's historic fire suppression efforts. The science has not yet determined that logging is the best answer for managing sequoia groves. Removing large commercial trees accelerates the establishment of dense understory species. It does not remove ladder fuels and usually results in increased fuel loadings. Logging also requires a transportation system whose significant expense might be better directed at other, more immediately beneficial management activities, or the development of badly-needed visitor-supportive infrastructure like interpretive signage, foot trail maintenance, non-roated kinds of recreation, or the once-proposed visitor center. Logging green trees also does little to protect adjacent human communities. The risk of severe fires is reduced significantly by understory thinning followed by controlled burning under an appropriate prescription. Unlike overstory removal, non-commercial thinning of the understory can protect adjacent human communities and infrastructural developments. The Antiquities Act directs designation of the smallest area compatible with the proper care and management of the objects to be protected. Since sequoias require water that comes from a large area, experts on Giant Sequoia, sequoia has determined that the smallest area can include the entire discrete watersheds that surround the groves. That's why the three-hundred-twenty-six thousand acres are so important. Ensuring sufficient soil moisture is the most critical requirement for ensuring proper care and management of the Giant Sequoias for future generations, which just happens to be the overarching goal of the Antiquities Act. Just to finalize it here, here are some solutions. Aggressive management in the form of non-commercial thinning followed by prescribed burning has thus far not been a funding priority on the Sequoia National Forest, but there are funding options worth exploring. These include, but are not limited to, one, employing the Good Neighbor Authority under the Farm Bill, which uses Forest Service funding to employ state personnel such as Cal Fire to get priority Forest Service projects accomplished. Number two, requesting National Forest Service funding and fire abatement targets under the National Fire Plan. When I worked in the Regional Office in Atlanta, the California region requested the least target and the least money for fire abatement relative to other regions. We asked for a million acre target, and we burned a million and a half acres. California, my last year there, asked for sixteen hundred acres. That's all. So, they can ask for more money to do that. Requesting National Forest funding, number three, also under the National Fire Plan, funds are available to federal and state agencies and local communities to better prepare and plan for future fire seasons. Local communities and the state can apply for these grants to work on private and federal lands. And lastly, using natural ignitions and managed fires, as they're doing now, to achieve resource objectives, and these are funded through Regional Forest Service Fire dollars. I thank you so much for allowing me to speak, since I didn't have the opportunity last time.
That concludes our public comment period for today.
By the way, I just want to say one thing real quick. This is the second month I come to try to talk to you.
Go ahead. I'll let you speak.
And so then, in respect, thank you, by the way, for allowing me to say this.
Please state your name and address.
My name is Art Rodriguez, and I'm from Poplar. Could you guys please bring to the agenda for the next meeting the issue on allowing the community to have input and then voting in that direction, or whatever you guys find. Just bring it to the table so that people can come and talk. A lot of people are hurt. A lot of things, it's just not okay. Just, that was it. And if, yeah, that's it. Or tell me how I can help.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. We are now going to move on. We have a nine-thirty timed item that we have three minutes before we get to that item. We will now take up our untimed items. I'm sorry, we will take up our consent calendar first. My apologies. Item number thirteen is going to be moved to the July 18th calendar, and item number twenty-six will be removed completely from consideration today. Would any member of the Board or member of the public like to have any additional items removed from the consent calendar?
What was the second item?
Item twenty-six.
Seeing one, then I would move for approval of balance of consent calendar.
Second.
All right. I have a motion by Supervisor Ennis, a second by Supervisor Chuckley. Please vote. Motion passes four to zero, unanimous, with Supervisor Worley not voting because he is not in attendance today. Okay. We will now move on and take up our untimed item, because we have two minutes prior to the nine-thirty timed item, and we will begin with the item twenty-eight, which is a request to receive a presentation from the Environmental Health Services Division of the Health and Human Services Agency on proposed changes to the Tulare County Well Construction Ordinance.
Hi, good morning. Good morning, Board.
Good morning, Board, um, good morning, C.A.O. Spada and County Council. So, what I handed out was a copy of the, um, PowerPoint presentation, along with a copy of the ordinance. So, my name is Nelsa Gonzalez, I'm with Tulare County HHSA, and I'm the Director of the Environmental Health Department. There we go, thank you. And I'm here to talk to you about the Well Construction Ordinance Amendment. So, why are we amending the ordinance? Um, we want to continue protecting the health and safety of the residents of Tulare County. We want to continue with the protection of our groundwater from possible contamination. We would like to realign our ordinance to meet our current industry-accepted standard practices, and we'd also like to mirror, um, neighboring well ordinance counties from other jurisdictions. Some of those, um, ordinances that we reviewed are Calaveras, Fresno, Kern, Kings, and Stanislaw County. And we also want to always keep in mind planning and development. So, just to give you a little bit of history of the ordinance, the last revision was done in November of nineteen ninety-seven, prior to that, the revision was in nineteen seventy-nine, so as you could see, we're definitely due for an update. Our current revision process actually started in twenty-eleven internally within the Environmental Health Department, and in twenty-fourteen, we opened, um, up for comment. So, stakeholder input, and why that's so valuable to us. We wanted to make sure that we had a really broad perspective, and had a lot of different eyes looking at this ordinance. We always want to make sure that we're protecting the health of our residents of the county, but we also wanted to update to reflect construction and destruction requirements, and also take a look at those annular seal requirements. Um, it was really important with, to us, to be in line with the industry-accepted practices, which is why we also reached out to our well drillers. So, we conducted some outreach. In March of twenty-fourteen, the Water Commission, uh, Community Water Center, and the Ag Policy Advisory Committee were provided with the well ordinance for review, and by November of that year, we had received over a hundred and fifty comments that were submitted for consideration. In twenty-fifteen, we continued to update the draft ordinance to reflect the recommendations that were received from stakeholders. So, what you see before you is actually Draft eighteen of the ordinance. And in twenty-sixteen, the community outreach meetings were conducted by environmental health staff and the HHSA Community Outreach Team. It was also really important for us to, um, at those meetings, to make clear that changes to this ordinance were not meant to impose water right restrictions, nor to address quality and quantity issues, because those are housed within sigma, and this was simply a construction ordinance. So, this is the postcard that was sent out to all of the stakeholders in twenty-sixteen. We conducted three outreach meetings, we also had information in English and in Spanish, um, and provided educational material as well while we were out there. The first meeting was in Strathmore, um, then we went over to Monson-Sultana Elementary School, and our last meeting was held at the Pixley Elementary Cafeteria. So, I'd like to take a little bit of time to thank our stakeholders. This really was a team effort in coming up with this updated ordinance. As you could see, we received several comments from lots of different folks, we actually had, um, sit-down meetings with a lot of people, um, Ed Needham really provided a lot of input through the Ag Policy Advisory Committee, and they actually went through the ordinance at one of their meetings, line per line. Um, I also, we also were, um, talking a lot to Kristen with Community Water, and of course, the Water Commission was also presented with the ordinance as well for comment. So, I want to talk a little bit about what we implemented into the ordinance. Um, these are, this is not an all-inclusive list, this is simply the most significant changes to the ordinance that were made. All wells will now have a minimum of a fifty-foot annular seal. Um, this really simply addresses the ag wells, because currently, they have a twenty-foot annular seal requirement in our current ordinance, so we're giving that extra thirty feet of protection for groundwater. We also added two important setbacks, um, to the setback section of the ordinance. The first one is underground storage tanks at a hundred and fifty feet, and the second one is surface water systems at twenty-five feet. And so, underground storage tanks are usually what you see, like, at gas stations, or even old abandoned gas stations. We also removed a section that was related to well equipping and development, we simply decided to refer to Bulletin seventy-four eighty-one and seventy-four ninety of the Department of Water Resources that houses all the details for those requirements. There were some things that we were able to implement through policy changes that didn't necessarily need to make it into the ordinance. So, effective July first of twenty-sixteen, permits can now be transferred between contractors through the submission of an amended application and filing fee. This really came forward due to the drought, there were so many people that were on waiting lists for twelve to eighteen months at a time, and didn't have the ability of amending the information that was on in existing applications. So, many times, the well driller that was named on an application initially may not be the well driller who actually did the work. So, this gave property owners the ability to amend that information without having to start over, so it was really a time saver and a money saver for our property owners. We also added a section to address abandoned wells, um, we give guidance on determining whether a well should be placed in inactive status, or should be destroyed. Um, and so, this also puts, uh, gives the property owner the ability to decide what he wants to do with his well on his parcels. We added a new definition for a dairy well, which is a well on a dairy farm that's used for purposes of milk production. Um, we are addressing wells that, of course, are not being used, but implemented the well inactivation applicant. So, back to the previous slide, we talk a little bit more about inactivation versus, um, destroying an actual well. We, um, also implemented the hold of new permits, so if we have a well driller that has a significant amount of well completion reports that over ninety days, um, overdue, we have the ability to hold their current permits that they're pulling. This really had a positive effect on our well drillers, because of course, they want to process their permits as quickly as possible. So, as you all know, it is state law to, um, for them to submit those well completion reports in a timely manner, so this really helped, um, the department in receiving those, uh, reports. We also started, um, scanning, uh, a project in twenty-fourteen, where we started scanning applications, permits, and well completion reports into the Questi system. So, that digital database is just about complete, all data from nineteen seventy to twenty-fifteen are about ninety-five to ninety-eight percent completely, uh, electronic now. And from twenty-fifteen to the current, we have a company called SciTech, who was hired to do the digital project. They've completed the upload of all data, and we're now in the quality control phase, and doing, uh, cross-checking with IT and environmental health staff. There is a section where we address abandoned wells again, um, we also started doing phone surveys. During the peak of the drought, we really, uh, realized that we needed to gather data and information, and it also has helped us identify parcels that have abandoned wells, so that we could reach out to those property owners and see if they want to place that well in inactive status, or they want to move forward with destroying a well. This next implementation is in the denial section of the ordinance, uh, the denial of a permit where a connection to a public water system is willing and able to serve was added. This was a recommendation that came from Community Water, which we felt was an appropriate recommendation for this ordinance. Um, so, basically, if you are a, a property owner, and there is a public water system such as a city, or perhaps a small community, or transient non-community system, that is willing and able to serve potable water to your property, then, um, we require hookup to that water system. We removed, um, all sections that dealt with confidentiality of a well completion report. As you are aware, in twenty-fifteen, with Senate Bill eighty-three, um, that no longer made that information confidential, and it made it, um, public access for all well completion reports. We also extended the validity of a permit, so currently, in our current ordinance, a permit is valid for six months. Um, during the drought, we really realized that six months wasn't nearly enough time, and so, we were extending those permit validity dates out to a year. So, this current updated ordinance reflects that current practice, and it makes permits valid for one year. Emergency work. So, this section is simply just to clean up, uh, language, the change timeline from forty-eight hours to one business day for notification and permits submitted by a driller, really is the same thing. So, if you have an emergency on a Saturday or Sunday, and you need to either deepen the well, or make repairs, or even drill an entirely new well, um, the property owner still has the ability to have a driller come out on the weekend, do that work, and then the driller submits the application for permit the following Monday. And then lastly, I'd like to highlight our volunteer water well testing program. So, starting in two thousand five, for all new or deepened private, individual, and public domestic wells with two to four connections, we started encouraging those folks to test for bacteria or chemicals. And so, we actually have pamphlets in the office that are distributed to, um, folks that come in to pull a permit for well drilling, and we also have that information on our website at tularecountieh.org, but it really gives the property owner, um, the, uh, the ability to test for any chemical constituents or bacteriological, if they so choose to do so. There is a collection fee, and there is a lab analysis fee, so we actually send staff out to go collect that water sample for the property owner, we take it over to our BSK Lab drop-off site, analysis, um, gets processed, and if any of the results are over the MCL, which is the maximum contaminant level, um, we then distribute educational information, um, that we receive from CDPH. So, next steps. So, what I'm, um, asking today, what I'm requesting, is to waive the first reading of the amended version of Part Four, Health and Safety and Sanitation, Chapter Thirteen, Wells of the Ordinance Code of Tulare County, to set the second hearing for August first, twenty-seventeen, and to direct the Clerk of the Board to publish a summary of the amended ordinance before the second reading, as required by law, on August first, twenty-seventeen. So, that's all I have today for the presentation. I also have, um, Ken Bowers with me today, who's the Program Supervisor for the Well Drilling Program, and Paul Sharpentier, who did a lot of the work on this ordinance, and working with the updating of the ordinance here, and we're available for any questions that you might have.
Any questions or comments from, uh, Board members about this item?
I don't have any questions, and my, my only comment is, uh, serving on the Ag Policy Committee, actually, this, this, uh, was my first meeting, uh, on the Ag Policy Committee, and it was the last meeting that they talked about, and, and took in the, the final draft, so I didn't really work much on it, but I do want to thank, uh, just from that one meeting, I could see a lot of work went into this, uh, from all the folks on the committee, so I'd like to thank everybody, uh, for their participation on this.
Yes, thank you.
Supervisor Anis, did you want to say something, I saw that hand wave.
Well, I had hoped that we was going to somehow put into this ordinance, and I'd thought about this early on when I was on the Water Commission, uh, about taking land like rangeland that's never been in farm production, never raised crops, and letting people go out and put these big high-powered wells down, and start irrigating and, and growing crops. I wanted to try to prohibit that some way, because in the situation we're in right now in the valley, uh, we need to fall back and take a look at what we're doing, we're doing the groundwater management plan right now, but we need to fall back and take a look at what we're doing with the future of this valley, and we can't continue to move up onto this rangeland and drill wells and put crops in production which have never been there before. With the Friat area, that's what made the Terabell area so great, we saw what happened out there, when we lost our Friat water, we lost nine thousand acres of oranges, so, uh, I would like to see something that effect put on, so that we can have some discussion on that. Uh, I'm seeing things happen right now that, uh, I'm not really liking, uh, I'm not really liking what's going on up in Frager Valley right now, with a thousand acres of pistachios going in on rangeland that's never been in production, and here we are in the midst of just coming out of a drought, I think we're still in the drought, it's going to take a lot of years. But we don't have the groundwater, when you pull the groundwater out above, you're affecting somebody below. So, I'd just like to see that put on, uh, and I appreciate everybody's work on this so far, but I was, hopes that something like that would be put into the ordinance, uh, in the future, and maybe have some discussion on that, with the Ag community too.
A, and I believe the well ordinance is going to be coming back, this is just for the construction part of it, but, um, the well ordinance will be coming back, I believe, August first, uh, was what information.
I'd like to see some research on that, and I'd also like, I see Mr. Needham out there, like to have the Ag, uh, community, uh, weigh in on that as well.
Uh, the, the comment that I was going to make to, uh, Nelsa, was just that I appreciate the inclusion of all of our partners, the community outreach that was done, uh, with, uh, outreach done throughout the county, I think that's very, very important, and, uh, I think that it had a very positive effect on, uh, uh, the actual well construction ordinance that we see in front of us today, so.
Absolutely.
Uh, my kudos on, on a job well done to that effect. Uh, any, sure, Supervisor Crocker?
Uh, I, my concern with the ordinance is the definition of an abandoned well. Right now, it states that it's, if, if it's not, if you have a well that's not in use for a year, then it's considered an abandoned well, it may be considered, and if you have surface water like this year, that, there may be areas that don't utilize, uh, a well, because there's more than ample surface water. So, are we going to, you know, go out and say, "Everyone in LSID, you've got abandoned wells now because you didn't," or whatever irrigation district, I mean, that, that's, i- it seems to me that there are, there are two different definitions here, inactive and abandoned, and, um, but, you know, I, I, I would, I would like to see that, that the abandoned period is a longer period of time before, uh, it becomes that, and you, you can have that separate designation of inactive that, that has that interim period.
Right, and so, um, we could definitely look at that, once, uh, a well has been identified as abandoned, they have the ability to place it on inactive, um, status, so it doesn't necessarily have to be destroyed because of it.
But the, it's on, the farmer then has to take the initiative to go ahead and, and take that action.
Right, to determine what they want to do with their well, right, on their property, but we could definitely look at that.
Oh, no, I, I was going to open it up to public comment, uh, actually, as soon as, as soon as we're done with questions from the Board.
That's it.
You good? Okay, I will now open it up to, uh, public comment, Ed, please do come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, good morning. Board, Ed Needham, Tulare County Farm Bureau Chair.
And you can adjust the microphone so you don't hurt your back.
Uh, Ed Needham, uh, Tulare County Farm Bureau Chair of APAC, um, I want to commend Health Department, working with this group is amazing, they really got their act together. Um, this ordinance was dear to my heart, um, I spent a lot of time on it, spent a lot of reading, so, to answer your question, Supervisor, what we did is, my concern was, is that going into parcels, there's abandoned wells, people, they're just there, and it's, and it's a conduit to, to contaminate groundwater. So, we said is, when you come out, and when you come in and you're filed for a permit, if there's any wells on that parcel, they have to be identified, and if they're not in use, then they need And if they're not in use, then they need to be identified as either abandoned or inactive. And if they're inactive, they have to register them on an annual basis and pay a fee. And that's kind of the incentive to say, is this really worth keeping this hole open or not? So it's for a water quality issue in order to do that, so people don't just let all these holes be open in the ground. And I, from my standpoint as a farmer, I've seen a lot of that on some of these older grounds where that hasn't been addressed, and that was something to help with water quality. So hopefully that addresses it, so spent a lot of time on that part. From the Farm Bureau standpoint, in AIPAC, the way this is written, we're a hundred percent behind it. We think it's ready to move forward. Supervisor Anis, your point, we took that in as a policy lead from Supervisor Ashida at the Water Commission. We took that to subcommittee, it came back, really didn't go anywhere, understand what you're talking about. I don't think this ordinance, this is a construction ordinance. I would not like, I would be against seeing any kind of provisions go into this ordinance that would be addressing a policy-type change. I think this is more construction, as Anilso pointed out. So that's kind of my comment. Any questions?
Just thanks, thank you for all the work, Ed.
Yeah, it's great. So ready to move forward on this. Thank you.
Awesome. Any additional public comment? And you can use either microphone, if it's closer for you.
Yeah. Good morning, Board. Kristin Dobbin with Community Water Center, and I'm really pleased to be before you today to support this draft that you have in front of you. This has been the result of more than three years of work with a lot of stakeholders, and I really want to thank staff for all of their work they put into this, and for the stakeholders that have been engaging alongside Community Water Center, especially the Agricultural Policy Advisory Committee. This has been the result of a lot of work, and Community Water Center stands behind the ordinance and thinks it's ready to move forward and get this job done. What is before you this morning is a strong ordinance that's going to better protect Tullary County groundwater and the public health and safety of Tullary County residents. But I do want to point out that any policy is only as good as its implementation, and so we can't lose sight of that once we get this ordinance done. This ordinance has the potential to make huge strides to stopping the proliferation of drinking water issues in the county by reducing reliance on unsustainable domestic wells and conditioning domestic well permits on proper treatment. And Community Water Center stands ready to work with staff and the board and other stakeholders to make sure that those parts of the ordinance are as effective as possible to reduce our drinking water issues in the county. And finally, we work, now that this ordinance hopefully would be done, I encourage your board to adopt it and move forward on the first for the second, for the second reading. It's time to turn our attention to the second ordinance that's been proceeding in parallel to this effort. So let's wrap up this one and turn our focus to that, which hasn't moved since your board instructed a draft to be written in December. So I agree with Supervisor Anis, let's get moving on this, but also let's get this one done. Thank you.
Any additional public comments? Okay, seeing none, I will bring it back to the board for action and order discussion.
I move approval.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Chuckley and a second by Supervisor Anis. Please vote. Motion passes four to zero, with Supervisor Worley not voting because he is not in attendance today. We will now go back to our nine-thirty timed item and take that up. This is a request from the Resource Management Agency to accept the categorical exemption as the appropriate environmental determination consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act and the State SEQA Guidelines. Mr. Washam.
Good morning, Chairman, Board Members, Mr. Cao Spada and Ms. County Counsel, Ms. Peterson. Mike Washam, Associate Director for RMA, and today for your consideration is a request for a zone change, number PZC seventeen zero zero two in Goshen. In summary, the request is to change the zoning designation on two parcels comprising little under five acres from A-one agriculture to C-three service commercial zone. Sites located on the northwest corner of Betty Drive and Robinson Avenue in Goshen. There was no requirement to process a zone change initiation because the site is located within an urban development boundary, and there's no change of land use designation associated with this request. Project Review Committee approved PRC fourteen forty in November of two thousand and fourteen to allow Embree to submit an application for this zone change. And the Planning Commission, back on May twenty-fourth of this year, recommended that the Board of Supervisors approve the category exemption and change of zone by Resolution ninety-three oh two. General Plan Consistency. The general plan land use designation for this site is industrial, and that is consistent with the C-three service commercial zone. Pursuant to the MOU with City of Visalia, staff has sent an early consultation notice to the city, and they had no comments on the project. Staff also performed a rural valley land plan evaluation, which resulted in a score of four points. The RVLP policy is if the number of points accumulated is eleven or less, the parcel would be considered for non-agricultural zoning, so it's significantly scored low on that. To your right, or to your left, I'm sorry, is the existing land use designation. It's industrial, and to your other side is the vicinity map. And as you can see, the Goshen community plan at the time, there's been a realignment of Betty Riggin Drive, so you don't see the road come across, so that's kind of why it doesn't quite fit, the two maps don't fit, because that realignment is the third. Existing zoning, you see the site there is A-one, it's adjacent to M-one zoning, there on the north side of Riggin, and the proposed zoning is there shown on the ordinance map. Here's an aerial Google Earth shot of the site. Here's a street view of the same site. You can see that the intersection is signalized, it has ADA compliant ramps on all four corners, sidewalk. Direct access to the site will be off of Robinson. Here is what's being proposed for the location, is a Dollar General store, and as you can see, the access to the site doesn't impact Betty Drive at all, it's off of Robinson Avenue. Here's the driveway to the parking lot. They're proposing to develop one point six acres of the little under five acre site, so that leaves additional three and a third acres available for further development. Again, I mentioned that the signalized intersection, ADA compliant, crosswalks, it's about a million-dollar investment as far as the building when it goes in, it's going to be a nine thousand square foot, that's their typical model, and you're looking at about eight to twelve new jobs created with this project. So with that, a category exemption is in accordance with the SEQA and the state guidelines pursuant to Title fourteen, Class Three pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures. Projects compatible with this exemption because the proposed structures would be less than ten thousand square feet in an area that's designated as, in an urban development boundary on a site that's already designated for this type of development. So with that concludes staff's presentation. The request is, the actions is detailed in your attached Board of Supervisor Resolution encapsulated as follows: to hold a public hearing to receive testimony, approve the category exemption, direct the Environmental Assessment Officer to file a notice of exemption, adopt the findings of the change of zone as set forth in the Planning Commission's resolution, waive the final reading, and adopt the amendment ordinance number, to number three fifty-two, and direct the clerk of the board to publish the adopted ordinance and amending zone. So that concludes staff's presentation. If you have any questions?
Any questions or comments of staff?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Supervisor Chuckley.
Mike, now, there's a different Dollar General and Dollar General markets, is that correct?
Dollar General, well, there is a, Tullary County doesn't have any of the Dollar General markets.
Right.
They're a larger scale, they're like twenty-two, twenty-five thousand square feet buildings.
That big, okay.
We don't have any in Tullary County. I believe there's two in Kern County and the City of Bakersfield, and I think there's two in Fresno.
Yeah, I went to one in Fresno, and that's why I was asking, because it seems like there, there's more of the healthier, the produce and grocery aspect of the Dollar General markets as opposed to, I'm not opposed to this, you know, going in, I think this is needed in that area, but maybe in the future, we can try to look at the more produce, healthier food items, especially in these communities with the Dollar General markets. I don't know.
Absolutely, I understand. It's a business decision from the company as where to locate. We are always encouraging that. I don't think the demographics and the rooftop meet their market demands in some of these areas, but we are certainly encouraging them. We'd love to have a full market that includes produce and meats, but that's not what's being proposed. However, the site would be able to accommodate, because they're not developing the full parcel, could potentially develop, you know, expand at that site.
Yeah, if we could keep that in mind for future development, especially in these communities.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And just in response to that, I will just say, in Early Mart, actually, one of the first projects that was built at the White River Plaza was a Dollar General store, and eventually, there's actually plans right now for a grocery store potentially to be entering that shopping center as well. So I imagine that's a possibility if that happens.
Great.
Any additional questions or comments? This is a public hearing. I will now open the public hearing. Any members of the public wishing to comment on this, please come forward, state your name and address. Okay, seeing no one, I will close the public comment period, public hearing, and bring it back to the Board of Supervisors for discussion and or action.
It's a good project, I would move for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Anis, a second by Supervisor Chuckley. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously four to zero with Supervisor Worley not voting because he is not in attendance at today's meeting. Thank you very much. Don't go too far, Mike, I think you're up on the next item, too. I will now take up item number twenty-nine, which is a request from the Resource Management Agency to adopt a resolution consenting to the inclusion of properties within the county's unincorporated area in the California Municipal Finance Authority Open Pace Program.
Thank you again, Mike Washam, Associate Director, RMA. We have three items for consideration. I'm going to do one presentation for the three pace items, rather than just replicating the same presentation over. So for consideration today for your board is adopting resolutions to participate in the California HERO Program, the Y-Green Works Program, and the Open Pace Program. Basically, a little background, PACE is a financing mechanism that enables long-term financing for energy-efficient renewable energy and water conservation projects. PACE financing is repaid on an assessment on the property's regular tax bill, and is processed the same way of local public benefits. Sidewalk sewers have been paid in, for decades. There's several key keystones that hold true for every PACE program. PACE is voluntary for all the parties involved. PACE can cover up to a hundred percent of the project's hard and soft costs, long-term financing up to twenty years, can be combined with utility, local, and federal incentive programs. Energy projects are permanently affixed to the property, and the PACE assessment is levied against the homeowner's property and appears as a property tax assessment in a separate line item on the homeowner's property tax bill. In California, there's approximately twelve PACE programs operating in over five hundred cities and counties throughout California. To date, there's been about two billion dollars of projects installed or constructed. In Tullary County, the county, your board authorized the California First Residential Pace Program in two thousand and fifteen. In addition, all eight cities within the counties have authorized PACE programs, multiple programs. I look back on the tax roll to see, tax assessments come on once a year, so you're only getting a window once a year of these assessments as they're placed. On the two thousand and sixteen, seventeen tax roll, there's four hundred and fourteen PACE assessments that have been placed. The construction value to date is estimated to be approximately seventeen million dollars. Now, that doesn't go on to assessed value at this time, because those improvements are not assessable until the property's sold. So when you're looking at an average turnover of maybe seven years between sales of houses, you're looking at, in about seven years, you'll see recoup about nine million dollars, potentially an added value to the assessment. Currently, there's, again, I looked on to see where we stood with delinquencies on the PACE assessments. Currently, there's seven assessments for PACE that are delinquent. That would look at, of a rate of about one point six nine percent that are delinquent, but by delinquent meaning miss one of the payments this year, one or two. One of them missed two, the other six missed one of the payments, so they're at least a couple of months late. Currently, across all tax codes, the delinquency rate is about five point nine percent. So there's, it doesn't look like there's a spike specifically geared towards the PACE assessments. Public outreach and industry outreach, this is the third time the board is considering this matter. Last year in June, we met and had some discussions and meetings with the real estate industry, and then again in January, we came to board, and as a result of that, there was a comment made that the cities are looking at maybe getting out of PACE programs, because again, this is a voluntary commitment, so you can rescind your inclusion in the program. So staff made inquiries to each city manager regarding their experiences with PACE, so I contacted every city manager in the county, and I received responses from all eight, and none of them have expressed any concerns or negative impacts regarding the city's PACE programs. And furthermore, no group or organization has approached any of them requesting that the programs be rescinded. And in fact, Dignuba, Farmersville, and Porterville added, has added PACE programs since we met in June of two thousand and sixteen. The Tullary County Association of Realtors, they, after the first meeting, met with some of them, their local weekly meetings, the PACE industry representatives met with them on a couple of those meetings. At the end of, in January, when we were here last, we had a conference call between PACE representatives, the county staff, and the Tullary County Association of Realtors. And by agreement, all parties agreed to hold workshops and seminars as needed for contractors and realtors to review best practices, guidelines for the PACE financing programs. As a result of that, like I said, we had multiple meetings last summer and into the fall, but then we also had developed a PACE forum that we held on June fifteenth of this year, invited to attend. The Tullary County Association of Realtors, the Kings Tullary Building Industry Association sent information to area title companies, the tax, treasurer tax collector's office, and other interested parties. So we held that meeting on, like I said, June fifteenth. Unfortunately, no one from the real estate industry attended. We did have a number of people from the county tax collector's office, we had self-help enterprises, a person from them, and some building industry, and we had representation from all the programs here on today's agenda, as well as California First that you approved a few years ago. So we had a big representation, but unfortunately, no one from the industry attended. Recent events, in March of two thousand and fourteen, Governor Brown set up a ten million dollar mortgage loss reserve to reimburse first mortgage lenders for PACE payments. However, there's been no claims to that yet at this point. In July of last year, the FHA and the VA announced new guidelines under which they would insure mortgages on properties with PACE assessments. These new guidelines are intended to stimulate access to the clean energy financing. On November eighteenth, the Department of Energy released best practices guidelines for residential PACE programs. There's a number of legislation moving forward that is based on these best practices that have been developed at the DOE. Recent legislation, AB twenty-six ninety-three was passed and became effective January first of this year. That legislation was sponsored by the California Association of Realtors, which requires additional truth in lending disclosures and more that are similar to what you have with a standard mortgage. They have a property assessment, including PACE financing may not exceed five percent of the market value of the home. The owners must be in good standing with their mortgage and property tax payments. Financing can be, must be for less than fifteen percent of the value of the property. Property owners give a three-day, three business days right of rescind, right to cancel financing, so they have that period of time to reconsider and not move forward. And prior to consummation of the PACE financing agreement, property owners will be, must be given a statutory prescribed form of financing estimates and disclosure documents. There's additional pending legislation, SB two forty-two, which has already passed the Senate, and it's in the Assembly for further consumer protection policies. CSAC supports that legislation, and that's going a step further as far as underwriting guidelines for income and those types of things, again, getting closer and closer to the standard mortgage thing. So that really concludes staff's presentation. We have the three recommendations for each of the PACE programs. Oh, and just as an FYI, last night, Farmersville approved Y-Green's program at the city council meeting last night.
Okay, thank you very much, Mike. Any questions or comments from board members before I open it up to public comment? I do have a stack of requests for public comment.
I'd like to wait and hear public comment.
Okay. Thank you for the presentation. At this time, I will call first Robert Bendorff. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good morning, Supervisors. For those I haven't had an opportunity to meet yet, my name is Robert Bendorf, I'm the Market Development Manager for the California HERO Program. I work with municipalities that are not only in the county of Tulare, but also through the Central Valley, so work very closely on issues that are arisen from anything of clear disclosures to making sure everything is transparent, and we're working in our best effort to help your constituents. In addition to that, working in community events, we've been for multiple years sponsors of your Visalia Earth Day, things of that nature are typically organized through myself. And so, it's just a great appreciation to be here today. I provided you with a little bit of a packet, but I know there's planning to be some good discussion today, so I wanted to make some further introductions. In addition to myself, who works directly with the municipalities here as kind of a middle person to help with all communication to our corporate office, I actually, we actually have staff here from our corporate headquarters down in San Diego. We have Janine Lee, who has been a customer service representative in our call center for over three years, currently working with homeowners to make sure that they fully understand the program and things of that nature. We also have Chris Rude, who is actually a licensed appraiser, who works with the HERO Property Advisors, or HPA, which actually do outreach to realtors and lenders, title companies, and homeowners to explain the process when they, when a homeowner is looking to refinance or sell their home. In addition to Chris's role in answering questions, they actually, he's part of a team that does outreach to homeowners when a home is listed on the MLS, where he will, if a home is listed, they do scrub it daily and find that a HERO, reference it to our records, see that they are a HERO customer, and then we'll reach out to the listing agent as well as the seller. So, they fully understand, you know, there is a possibility that a new lender coming in may not accept the PACE lien, or if they choose to pay it off, things of that nature, he can walk through a homeowner, through that process, as well as the realtor, title company, and things of that nature. I know they take a lot of phone calls and they're very busy over there. But in addition to that, my senior director is here as well, Dustin Reilich, who I believe you have met before. He actually works down at our headquarters closer to, closer to the pulse of how everything works. So, I like to consider myself an expert on everything that we do, but understand I don't know everything, and there's a little bit of humility on my part, and so I brought them to answer any questions further that might be risen today. And in the packet that I provided to you, I provided a lot of things, but most importantly, the disclosures that are given to homeowners to make sure that they understand what is actually taking place. Because as, as most of you are familiar with financing, financing is usually an option that a homeowner chooses to use, and that is the exact case in this. That's what this board is approving today, essentially, is that you're not telling people to do it, you're not forcing them to do it, you're simply giving them an option. If they choose to use HERO to finance an energy or water efficient upgrade, they have that option, and that's all this really is, is an option for them. On the right, you have the right to cancel that is given to homeowners, where they have the three-day right to cancel with us. And also a completion certificate, which is provided to homeowners that say that we will not pay the contractor until he actually signs this form, so that there, the homeowner is in charge the whole time, and that the contractor understands that if they provide a good service, they will get paid at the end of that, at the end of that project. And going in further, just more disclosures, clear and transparent costs of what the, of what the project would be, and not just a simple interest rate, the annual percentage rate is also included in there for full disclosure. And the initials that are required by the homeowner in order for us to move forward, where the homeowner is initialing very specifically that, you know, things of, I know that interests this crowd very heavily, is initialing that, I understand that I may be required to pay off the remaining balance of this obligation by the mortgage lender refinancing my home. If I sell my home, the buyer or the mortgage lender may require me to pay off the balance of this obligation as a condition of sale. So, full disclosures there. In addition to the full disclosures that are actually on paper, every homeowner is actually required to do a confirmed terms call, where they call into our headquarters and throughout this process, and actually have to speak to a HERO representative, where they actually have a script that says everything that's in the disclosures that they've signed as well. You understand this is going to be your, the cost of your project, this is how much it's going to accumulate interest, this is the rate that you're choosing, do you understand that you should consult your tax advisor? Do you understand that, that you might have to pay this off when you are selling your home, things of that nature? So, the homeowner is fully aware, or at least to our best ability, aware that when they choose our form of financing to pay for the project, that they're, they're understanding that process. And even at that point, they're not obligated to use our financing, right? They could hear these things and choose, okay, you know what, this sounds a little bit complicated, I don't want it on my taxes, I will go ahead and pay cash for that upgrade instead. So, they still have that option as they always do, previous to PACE, even existing.
Would you please wrap it up?
Oh, oh, I apologize, okay.
Try not to be rude.
Thought it was open mic night, sorry. And then, further disclosures, which we can go into, but, or you can see up there, after the project is complete, where it's an amortization schedule, you'll also see a HERO.gov snapshot where it actually gives the data of the homes that have been upgraded into Tulare County. Actually, a fun statistic to notice is that out of twenty-three hundred and twenty-seven homeowners in Tulare County that have chosen to submit an application showing interest in HERO, actually six hundred and eighty-two have chosen to move forward and done the project. So, a very small percentage of homeowners are actually choosing to do that, and as a municipal partner, and someone that has worked in local government for, or been associated with local government for a long time, I see that as a good public policy, that homeowners are choosing the best option for them when it comes to financing and improving their homes. But happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, if we do have any questions, we'll definitely call you back forward.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, I have a request from Mike Vazina. Please come forward and state your name and address.
Mike Vazina, I'm from Madera, California. I just want to thank you guys for the time, I'm here on for PACE. We're a contractor that, we've worked with the city of Fresno, we've worked with tons of different people, and PACE gives people the ability that otherwise can't afford it, to get energy upgrades for their home. We've helped people just last week that don't have good FICO scores, that maybe own a home, that otherwise can't afford to get these things. We've helped them with the ability to get new air conditioners, new windows for their homes if their windows are broken. There's just so many good things that we've brought because of PACE, and it's a vehicle of financing. When I, when I read like what the real estate, the realtors are saying about like percentages, most of the people that we help with PACE can't get financing with any other people. They can't go to a traditional bank loan, they can't get three to five percent interest rates. This is one of the only options that they have, and it's truly been a blessing for so many people. I mean, we bring, when you're in a hundred and seven degree weather, and we bring them not only an air conditioner, but something that's of a higher quality, we can't, with the PACE program, you're not allowed to sell junk. We're bringing these people high equipment, high-quality equipment that's energy efficient, that's going to save them money down the line. I know everybody here probably has an energy bill, and everybody's noticed that it's only gone up in price, so we're bringing them things that can help them with that. We're saving them money in the long run, and we've been able to do this because of PACE. I mean, PACE has been a huge provider for our business, it's not the only avenue that we use either. We have all the others, so when we go to a customer, we give them many options, but some of them, this is all that they have, and I think a lot of people forget that when you start eliminating options, you're hurting the public, because they don't have the ability to choose different things. And like you said, it is a form of financing, if people can get better financing rates, they're educated and they're generally smart, and they go with the better financing rate. But I'm just here, we drove down here today because we believe strongly in PACE. PACE has been an excellent vehicle of financing for us, and we're very thankful for the PACE program, and the customers that we have are also very thankful for it. The one thing that I can add on top of that too is, the customer is in control the whole time. Unlike other financing where they may give contractors a down payment or something like that, we get zero dollars until the job's actually completed. So, until the permit's signed off, until everything has to be a hundred percent legit, until that's a hundred percent done, do we get paid. So, I really believe in PACE, I really believe it's a great program, and you should definitely talk to some of the people that have been able to get new items for their home, like air conditioning, or windows, or solar, or all these other items that will help them down the line because of PACE. But thank you for the time today.
I have a question again?
Yeah, sure, if you have.
Excuse me, I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you had mentioned when, when these replacements, or like in air conditioning, they're not getting junk, they're getting
Yes, ma'am.
Top of the line. What's to say that, okay, if somebody has a twelve hundred square foot home compared to a twenty-two hundred square foot home, how do you decide which air conditioner to get? Does a twelve hundred person get the same as a twenty-two hundred? Is there some kind of assessment that's done so they're not, you know, paying more for something that they typically pay less for?
It's based off square footage. So, we can't go and, you know, put a big five-ton unit on a house that had a three-ton unit. We size out for what's there, so generally, if their house was sized correctly, you know, rule of thumb, as you always hear, like five hundred square feet per one ton of air conditioning, right? So, if they're sized, you don't want to oversize, because that's going to waste money, you don't want to undersize either. So, we size to fit, so, and keep in mind too, everything that we're doing with PACE, it has to be permitted. So, you have to pull permits for this, and it's not like a building inspector is going to look at this little house and be like, oh, you sold them a six-ton air conditioner. You know what I mean? So, it's, everything we do is fitted for the home. And then also, one thing that we also include to our customers is a warranty, not just the one-year parts and labor. Because we're selling the high-grade equipment, when you sell cheap equipment, they don't, they don't give very much warranties. The equipment that we sell, we also include a ten-year warranty. So, we tell our customers, hey, you're going to get a better unit, you're going to get the right-sized unit, you're going to get a higher SEER, a higher efficiency unit, but you're also going to get a warranty, so for the next ten years, you're going to have zero worries. And that's what PACE has really provided these people.
And I know you're just one company, but are your prices competitive for these units as compared to if somebody were to go to a local vendor that wasn't in PACE or a big box store? Are they competitive?
Oh, yes, I mean, if I could sell for what Home Depot does, I wouldn't be here right now. So, I'll put it to you that way, like when you walk in a big box store, everybody thinks that they're getting this amazing deal. Our company happens to do new construction and also replacement. So, and you got to remember too, this is a capitalistic world. People usually, I'm not the only person walking into that, that customer's home, they usually get a lot of different quotes. So, we have to sell stuff, we're selling quality and value to that person, we're not telling them, hey, we're selling you the cheapest deal. And the other reason why is too, if you start to sell, especially with the internet now, we have Google reviews, we have Yelp reviews, we have all these reviews, if you start to sell something cheap, everybody's going to go online, because you know people only get bad reviews, they never give, it's a lot harder to get a good review than a bad review, right? So, if you sell these people garbage and it breaks down quickly, they're going to go on, they're going to just crucify you on the internet. So, we, we're raised, like, our bar is completely different than it used to be, this isn't the contracting of the seventies or the eighties or nineties. Because of Google and Yelp and all these different review services, we, our bar is set to a new standard. So, when we sell to people, we want something that there's not going to be service calls on, you know what I mean? When we sell to them, we don't want problems, because the first thing they do is they threaten you with a review. And we work very hard, my company has a four point nine out of five, I work very hard for that review. And it's, it's very hard to keep that up, but that's one thing that our customers really do appreciate.
Thank you.
But thank you for your guys' time.
Thank you very much. I next have a request from Michael Kulak.
My name is Michael Kulak, thank you for your time this morning. I am a small business owner, solar facilitators. PACE provides a vehicle for me as a small business owner and a disabled vet to have a company that I can run with the training and the support, unlike so many other things that are out there for somebody to start a small business with. PACE has been a, a strong tool for me to use to help those individuals provide a service that they were unotherwise able to acquire. It's a, it's a strong, strong tool and asset available for, for our customers, and I think most of us out here will agree with that. And the reviews is absolutely spot-on. We rely on referrals, we rely on our customers referring, referring us to the next person. If we don't do our work right, we're not going to get paid, the customer's not going to get taken care of. So, we have to make sure we're spot-on and provide a great service, that's all I have.
Thank you. Next, I have a request from Joe Lysake? Leviach? Leviach?
Keep going.
I'm trying, I can't.
Keep going.
Your handwriting's messy and your name's hard to pronounce.
Ellis Island messed up the spelling, it's not my fault. Good morning, Chair Vanderpoel and members of the board, Joe Leviach, representing
I was closing in on.
Representing the California First Program, active in unincorporated Tulare County since June of two thousand and fifteen. I want to speak today specifically to the program and how it's operating in Tulare County today. You'll hear some misinformation and maybe sensationalized stories of what has happened in other places, but I'm going to give you the data for Tulare County and how PACE is working. So, we've, in the unincorporated county, had six hundred and five applications for financing. Of that, ninety-four projects have been funded for two point three, close to two point three million dollars. So, of the applications, we've approved and funded fifteen percent. So, you may hear, everyone gets approved, you know, that's obviously not the case with the data and how it speaks. That's an average of twenty-four thousand dollars per project. We've had projects as low as seven thousand dollars. So, again, if you're in need of a replacement, this is an option for folks, that if they have the cash to do it, great, if they have a home equity on a credit, awesome, home equity loan, we think that's great too. The fact is, if you do have those things available to you, you're most likely not going to use those for energy and water-saving projects. You're going to save that credit for sending a kid to college, doing a major remodel. So, when you look at the replacement, you know, is it better to put something on a credit card and maybe pay it off down the road? Probably not. PACE is a vehicle that allows homeowners to make an investment in their home in the long term and choose the most efficient option. That's why homeowners like it, that's why contractors like it as well. I personally worked on Assembly Bill two thousand and six ninety-three last year in the California Legislature. We worked extensively with the California Association of Realtors. They told us at the time, what they want more than anything is consumers to know what they're getting into. We've mandated, State of California has mandated disclosures based on the Know Before You O Form, this is very similar to how mortgages are disclosed. Within the county, we've had zero defaults and zero foreclosures with properties that have a PACE assessment on them. So, again, you may hear something different, but within Tulare County, the facts just don't support that. We have had fourteen early payoffs as a result of an owner choosing to do so, maybe through a refi or a sale. So, of ninety-four projects that have been funded in the unincorporated county, fourteen have paid off. And again, when you look at comparable products, PACE is highly competitive to what products are out there for these replacement costs. Another thing that we spoke about earlier is with permits, all projects financed through PACE has, have to have applicable permits. You have to get a notice to proceed before you can start work with that permit, as well as a completion certificate that the homeowner signs off on and the contractor signs off on before a project can get paid. So, there are a number of consumer protections built into the program. We also have disciplined bad apple contractors who misrepresent the program. So, if there are any more questions about how the program's working within Tulare County today, I'm happy to answer those.
I have a question, Mr. Leviach. You've given a lot of stats, do you have any stats regarding any issues with problems selling a home and, say, a finance company not accepting, you know, taking on a loan because it had
Yeah, so at time of refi or sale, there's three things that can happen. That assessment gets transferred to the new owner, it's a point of negotiation, just like anything else in a sale. Either it gets transferred, they pick it up, a new lender or potential buyer wants that to get paid off, right? That's another option. California First has no prepayment penalties as well as the other major programs. We can also do a contractual limited subordination, so if there is a foreclosure or default, we will essentially waive our rights to foreclose on a property that has a PACE assessment, so the mortgage holder isn't impaired. So, I can't specifically say if, you know, twenty percent are affected, but of, of the ninety-four projects that have been funded, fourteen have been paid off early, with zero defaults and zero foreclosures.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it. Next, I have a request from George Apostolopoulos. I practiced that. I practiced that one, I practiced that one. Hey, what's up with you guys and crazy names today?
It's just because you probably watch Kopey all the time on 26, so you got the Greek thing down.
That was awesome. I mean, that was really good.
After my first mess up, I figured I'd get it right the second time.
And yeah, you're right, Supervisor Felkley, it is Greek, it's not Irish.
No, no, I know.
Anyway, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. George Apostolopoulos with Y Green Energy Fund. Since I'm so tall, I'm going to stand over here a little bit. I am the manager for district development within the Central Valley and parts of the Bay Area, and I'm here today to let you guys know kind of some of the things that we've been doing in Tulare County. We just got approved last year, the first city that approved us was the city of Porterville. And then Dinuba followed, and then last night Farmers, Farmersville followed with, with their vote. And so far, we've done about 33 projects. Solar, HVAC, windows and some roofing have been installed on some of these properties. And across the state, just so you guys have an idea of, of how, how well PACE is doing across the state, over 240 jurisdictions have approved the Y Green Works PACE program. And that's resulted in over 9,000 jobs being created. It's created over a one and a half billion dollar economic stimulus. And so the reason why I bring that up is because that's one aspect of PACE that is pretty important. When you start looking at good public policy and things like that, this is another avenue that PACE provides. It does help create jobs, it does help stimulate the economy. But one of the common things about PACE financing is what you heard earlier from my colleagues, is consumer protections. At the forefront of the PACE financing is consumer protection. So no matter what you hear in the media or whatnot, consumer protections are at the forefront of PACE. So when a property owner applies for PACE financing, as everybody said before, they know exactly what they're getting into. A lot of these, they have to be property owners, right? So I'm assuming that a lot of these property owners that went through the mortgage process knew exactly what they were getting into. So for them to get into something like PACE, I don't think it's very far, I don't think it's that difficult from a mortgage process and a PACE process. So I just wanted to bring that up as well. Secondly, as, as Joe just mentioned about AB 2693, you do have those know before you owe disclosures that are further enhancements to the disclosures that we all use. And I've provided those for you guys today. You have our complete set of disclosures when people apply for financing. And it's about 20 something odd pages. And so if you wa, if you, when you look through it, as they mentioned before, Robbie mentioned the disclosures that say you may have to pay this off, you know, the, that you may be able to refinance, there's, there's all these, all these, the verbiage that's in there is clearly written, and that's what is discussed with the property owners. On a phone call, that's recorded, so they understand what they're getting into. Now, in closing, with only about 15 seconds left, I also wanted to thank you guys for the time, for allowing us to speak about this again, and we do appreciate your time and effort and staff's effort, because this has been about a year and a half process, so I know that's taken a lot of time for everybody, so I really appreciate it. If any questions, I'm here to answer.
Thank you very much. You spoke almost as long as it took me to say your name, but, good job, man. Next I have a request from Linda Fry. Good morning, Linda.
Thank you. Linda Fry, Realtor, Central Valley Real Estate Investments. And I would just like to mention, if homeowners knew what they were getting into, we would not have had so many in the variable rate, loan, interest mess that we had a few years ago. I just had the situation of closing a property that had a PACE funding loan. I provided this to you like I would set up a real estate file back to front. So exhibit one, you'll see the listing that says that this house has solar panels purchased. I called the agent to see were they free and clear? Yes. No liens against it? No. I pulled a title report, no liens. You'll see that exhibit number two is, we had it appraised. Condition of the appraisal, proof that the solar panels are free and clear. Exhibit number three, this is the receipt given to the elderly homeowner, and this was a probate sale, and I would encourage you to never get involved in a probate sale. This shows that it was a cash purchase. If you look at the page before that, it was going to be financed. Three months later, I'm assuming that it is installed, it shows a cash purchase. I sent this to the lender. Will this be accepted as proof that the solar is prepaid? Yes. I had an 80-year-old buyer who did not have internet service, does not own a computer, has a very old, small screen phone, who went to PACE Funding. If you look at exhibit four, that's their website. He scrolled through page after page after page. He asked me what PACE Funding was on the receipt that the owner had, wanted to know if it was a rebate, did the owner get back $18,600? I said, I'll Google it. It says it is financing. He goes to the website. I've put a paper clip on page five where you can see the one sentence that says can lead to low interest rates because of high security of loan repayments attached to the property tax bill. We have no lien. We don't know there's anything on a property tax bill. I want you to look at the statement above that. Spreads repayment over many years and removes the requirement that the debt be paid at sale or refinance. We know that's not true because the appraiser has made it the condition that that be paid in full. The house doesn't appraise if it has an $18,600 property tax assessment on it. We go to title. We're ready to close. I call the title company with the buyer with me, and I said, we don't think the solar's paid for. Chicago Title is not new, they're not inexperienced. The title agent said, I guarantee you Tulare County is not collecting solar payments through property tax. I said, pull 2014, 2015, and 2016 tax records and we'll wait. 2014, they paid $1,187. 2015, they paid $1,187. 2016, they paid $3,398. I said, so where is it? That's the tax assessment. That's when title found it. We had no way of knowing because there's no lien. How would we know there's a tax assessment? If you go to exhibit number six, it had to be paid off through probate before the property could be closed. The $18,600 payoff from 2015 is now $21,385. If you go through this stack of papers, I put paper clips so that you can see out of the first payment of $2,121, $280 went to principal, $1,822 went to interest. If you go to the next page, you can see all of the upfront costs that are collected in advance through PACE Funding. I was stunned to get an EECU Credit Union newsletter while I'm in the middle of this that says, do your research on PACE loans. It's exhibit number seven. They don't put this in their newsletter because they have two or three people that have an issue. They put this in their newsletter because they have hundreds of people that have an issue. And I'm encouraging you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. And actually, you left a stack of your sticky little tabs in my-
Oh, thanks.
-if you want these back.
I do.
Yeah, it might be helpful for you. They ha, they happen to get stuck in there, I don't know. Here you go, there's probably like 20 of them there.
All right.
All right, I also have a request from, thank you for your comments, Linda. I have a request from Jack Ramsey. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
I'm nervous doing this. I'm Jack Ramsey, 2875 East Bardsley Avenue, Tulare. I'm, I'm a solar installer, I've owned AltSys Solar for the last 11 years. I employ 26 people right in the center of Tulare. PACE has helped, I don't really have a lot of fancy words, except for the fact that PACE is, is, the bottom line has allowed me to not always just sell solar to rich people. It makes it so that some people that just don't always have the opportunity and the ability to get lines of credits and the things that a lot of people take for granted, they're able to get solar and save money. It's, I haven't had any trouble with any of the loans that have, that I've dealt with with PACE and any of the projects I've done. Thanks for taking your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Oh, and to answer Amy, quality control, PACE does have a, a, a precise list of things, of products that you can use, and it has to meet there. And the other part of it is, I like the quality control that I deal with, which is a whole lot better. I've lived in the same address for 64 years and my home phone number's in the phone book, and I give every customer my cell phone number. Thanks.
Thank you very much. I now have a request from David Brown.
I'm David Brown with Highlands Energy. I live in Clovis, 93619, but we have a office and warehouse in Goshen, has 30, 35-plus employees. We've been serving this county, low income providers, doing energy upgrades and weatherization on homes for the last 30-plus years. A year ago, we added solar to the line of our offering for the retail public, not necessarily targeting low income. PACE has allowed, allows us to, like already stated, not just deal with somebody who maybe can't get solar, but at times, even right now, a home I'm doing this week is someone who was brought in to the region for their employment from Canada who had no credit file. And so these people were already doing well, but it, it allowed us to immediately save them over $120 a month in cash flow. When we're looking at low income, the people that need the system the most, we, you know, in quality control, one of the things that we do is we never put in a system unless there's positive cash flow and they know what's going on. Even to the fact where we go into some homes and see where some expectations have been met from other companies because there's a lot of competition in this industry, making sure they understand where they are and are they having true positive cash flow, can they truly use the tax credits? To also, you know, looking at just quality all the way through and offering to people who haven't been able to take advantage of what solar can do, even as electric rates, because right now they've already chosen, you know, solar, we just keep solar like some magic thing. It's electricity. Right now, we live in a region where we have some of the highest rates in the nation. My previous company, I served the nation, and I know where we are and where we stack in electric rates compared to the rest of the country. And we are in the top five of utilities for expense, expensive kilowatt hours. Replacing it with solar just makes sense here, and what makes more sense is offering it to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next I have a request from Matt Monig.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Matt Monig, I'm with Peterson Dean Roofing and Solar, I'm the Director of Consumer Sales. I have a bunch of notes, but they require my new reading glasses, so I'm going to try to wing you instead. Certainly, I respect the negative experience, horrible experience that you described, but I, I do think that's the exception, and I will say that for 34 years, we've been providing high-quality American solar panels and energy-efficient roofs throughout the state. We have a large office in Fresno that serves Tulare County and the entire Central Valley. Over the past three to four years, our business has increased about fourfold. I'd say during that time, we've done about $50 million in energy-efficient home improvements in the Central Valley alone, and we've added dozens of jobs in doing so. And I think this room has a whole bunch of people that can say the same things. I think we're probably talking about hundreds of jobs associated with the ability to provide energy-efficient home improvements through a variety of financing methods. And it really is about choice. I can say from experience, we're currently a preferred contractor with CalFirst, so we're doing business in the county already with the PACE program. And I can say that, well, in the last three years, we've probably financed about $300 million statewide in consumer products, home improvement products, with maybe a dozen different financing methods. Most of them secured by either a UCC1 filing, which is Equipment Lien, which also attaches to the property. Many, many unsecured loans, and then quite a bit, maybe 15% of that, through various PACE products around the state. All of them, if they're done improperly or done through unscrupulous contractors, can present the kind of problems that we're concerned about here, without a doubt. But I can tell you 100% that there is not another consumer funding source that goes further than the PACE contractors that we have experience with in vetting the quality of contractors, the quality of the products, regulating the length of the warranties, and then definitely on the consumer disclosure portion. You can go out and borrow $25,000 and do the same home improvement on an unsecured line, and literally, you're going to get a credit card and swipe the card and it's done. There are no disclosures about what the, the interest rate is. So let's not make PACE the enemy here. PACE has brought jobs to communities throughout the state, and it allows consumers a choice, and that's really what it's all about. Competition breeds innovation, breeds economy, and protects the consumer's right to choose. All of those are good for the residents of the county of Tulare, in my opinion. And in closing, I want to thank you guys for allowing the PACE program through CalFirst in the county to date, and I think that it would be good for the residents here if you allow more PACE programs to operate within the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have a request from Kevin Hauber.
Good morning, Supervisors. Kevin Hauber, I am Senior Loan Officer for the Mortgage House Green Division. We have offices throughout the Central Valley, Central California, and Southern California. I have been an advocate for energy and water efficiency financing for a long time. I was involved in the Realtor contractor and public outreach work that was done in San Luis Obispo County when PACE programs were bought online. The, the folks at County Energy Watch asked me to come in and talk about the big picture of what was available as far as financing for those kind of endeavors, and discuss how PACE related to that. We did that kind of outreach. I've been asked then since to do that on a statewide basis, and we're talking with resource management about doing that very kind of outreach here in this community. So I have compiled a sample of information for you, the kind of things that we include in the presentations that we do to try and inform Realtors and contractors and people in the public. There's been a lot of legislation that has occurred that's requiring energy and water efficiency, both in new buildings and in existing. That's going to increase a lot over the next few years, and there's going to be literally billions of dollars statewide required to do that. There are some matrices in there that look at the various financing options that are available, including mortgage products, non-mortgage products, and PACE loans. We have examples in there of the preliminary title report items that show up, that show what a PACE lien is and what a solar lien is. We try and, and share that kind of information because not recognizing that has been a problem in some cases. So being able to have that information readily available to the people involved in the transaction and awareness with the buyers and sellers is very important. And then also, there's some information on the guidelines that FHA, VA, and Fannie Mae have regarding PACE loans, how they can be continued, subordinated, paid off, and so forth. We also include some information on the, the contacts for the different vendors that are providers for PACE loans and solar leases, since having that kind of contact information is very important in a real estate transaction. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions or comments? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Next I have a request from Dustin Riley.
Hello, Chair and fellow Supervisors. Dustin Riley, Senior Director of Municipal Development for the California Hero Program by Renovate America. I think you've already heard from- a lot of the colleagues in Pace, a lot of the contractors, you'll probably hear from homeowners even, that have utilized Pace as a funding mechanism, as a voluntary option for their own home. A couple of things that hadn't been hit on that I just wanted to hit on, we've been making our program better and better over time. We've even brought down our rates over time. So we have start rates for contractors that start at 2.99% and go to 8.35%. So it's a fixed rate that is over the period of the assessment, and it's tied to the useful life of the product. So if you're doing HVAC financing and the useful life is 15 to 20 years, you can't finance it beyond 15 years. And that's set in our technology platform to make sure that there is no financing beyond the useful life. We brought down the interest rates overall to really help out homeowners. So the good thing for Tulare unincorporated area is there, all of those rates are going to be available for you going forward. One of the points that Robert Bendorf made that's very important is that this is a product that people apply for, but they don't always use it, and they don't qualify sometimes as well. So out of those applications that we've had, only about 65% of those people actually that applied got approved. And of those 65% that got approved, only about 650 to 700 people moved forward and actually did a project in the incorporated cities within Tulare County. What we're looking for from this board today is the acceptance of this program to make it available throughout the entire county so that you can provide additional jobs for your local contractors, and you have local good contractors that are working in the community. We pride ourselves on contractor quality and a scoring methodology through our technology platform to make sure that only the best of the best contractors are now operational here in your county. We have had situations with rogue contractors in the past, and those contractors are eliminated from the program and not allowed to utilize Pace as a mechanism for funding in their business. So it's very important, when you have a funding source, to make sure that you abide by the rules and regulations that are put forward by that Pace provider or that funding source, or else you're not going to have a funding source. So very important that there's standards that are put in place for all homeowners to be able to have consumer protections. And of course, this was put into law. So this was legislated under AB 2693 where there's a requirement to actually have all of these disclosures. And then we go over it with a confirmed term call with a live person to make sure that they understand all of those terms, and as you saw, the many different places that you have to initial next to on our agreement. So I hope that this board moves forward with Pace, and if you have any questions, I would be more than happy to answer. Yes, Amy?
I have a question. During that call, when they're asked, you know, do you understand what's going on, do you ask them how they heard of the program? I was going to ask one of the contractors, the reason I ask that, cold calls, knocking on somebody's front door and introducing themselves and, you know, making the pitch. Is that something that you frown upon? Do you ask, how did you hear of the program?
We do not ask that question, but let me just help you to realize the point of sale. The point of sale is that the contractor is simply pitching their product, whether it be solar, HVAC, or a brand-new cool roof, or new windows and doors, they're actually pitching their product. Financing isn't something that they're leading with. If I were to come to you and say, hey, I have a $20,000 product, can I come and talk to you about it, what's your answer going to be?
My answer?
Yeah. Absolutely. So if you lead with money, if you lead with financing, your sale is dead. So what they do is they build value in their product. And then, that final question comes at the end of the conversation, and at the end of the conversation, it's, how would you like to pay for this? Do you have cash? Because we all know cash is king. Or do you have an open line of credit for a HELOC that you want to utilize, or do you have other financing methods? Okay, we also have these Pace financing options. Which one would you like to apply for? They go over that, and then they apply directly with the Pace provider. So it's the homeowner and the financing company that are actually entering into that financing agreement. The contractor is not the one that's explaining financing.
Yeah, but in the political world, we call that a spin. I mean, they spin it that way, probably with the intention at the beginning to introduce the Pace. I mean, that's, it's happened to me. Yesterday, I met with some Realtors, and then I met with Mr. Bendorf, and I got home that night and I got a phone call, and they started with the whole pitch. It was amusing to me. I like those calls. Seriously.
Well, because then you know what your constituents are hearing, yeah.
The solar guys.
You've got a lot of time on you, man. You're going to be a full time.
No, the solar guys will call and start asking about my energy, and I tell them my bill is zero, and they say, really? I say, yeah, I have a windmill in my backyard, and I hear a click. I have a good time with it. So I heard a click yesterday. But that's just one of my concerns, is the cold calling and knocking on the door and calling and sucking people into it that way. And I know, I'm just trying to see if you guys allow that. I know you're not allowing it, but...
Yeah, and that's one of the reasons that we instituted the 100% confirmed term call is to make sure that we go over all of the terms with the homeowner so that they understand the financing, understand to consult their tax account, and understand to notify their mortgage holder, especially if they have an impound account, so that they can make sure that they start saving for that and things of that nature. So we're really thorough on that call. I mean, that call is running between 15 and 20 minutes with a live person on the phone going through all of the terms of the agreement, because they want to make sure that the constituent is fully on board and understands everything. And then we record the call and attach it to their file long-term so that if there's ever a question down the road, we can actually interface with the homeowner and say, well, we went over this in the past, or maybe to be able to help them through a scenario with a contractor that maybe has a dispute, so we can help through that scenario. So, yeah. Thank you for the question.
Dustin, my question for you. I had the chance yesterday to meet with Robbie as well, and had a very thorough conversation, but my question has to do with what's happening immediately south of us. Kern County has allowed for the HERO program to be in existence in their county, but now there's an item that's going to be coming before their board to rescind that program in their county.
Right.
Can you comment to that? Because Bobby was very, Robbie was very quick to say, hey, my line ends.
Yeah. So I'll help you with that. It's unfortunate, and we hope to get that reversed sometime in the future. There was good public policy made, and the Kern County Board moved forward on five different occasions, approving unanimously, moving forward with Pace as options for their constituents. There's been, in Kern County, there's been over 4,500 projects that have been completed. So that's a lot of projects compared to under 1,000 that have been completed here overall. And with that number, there's only been 170 homes that have been listed for sale, and over 60% of those have sold with no problem. And then the others, they've had to either pay off at the time of sale or refinance. But we're talking 170 transactions and less than 40% of those where there might have been transactional situations, and that got blown up by their local Realtor Association. And it was unfortunate that we, as Pace providers, were not at the forefront of it when the Bakersfield Association of Realtors started visiting board members and causing fright in front of them. And so although there were hundreds of homeowners that reached out saying, we love this program, don't take it away, and things of that nature, they are in the process of looking at rescinding the resolution just because of what the Realtors had brought to them as a scare tactic. And I would say it's based on some legacy issues that they see as, you know, a very small percentage, less than 1% of the population, that had any type of challenge of any sort. So I wish I had a better answer, that they weren't going to rescind it, but it's unfortunate that they got to them the way they did.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments. All right, that is the end of the public comment requests that I have filled out. Now I can accept a public comment from anybody who does not have a form filled out?
Oh, no.
Please state your name and address for the record.
You guys know what? Sam Shaka.
This is not the NUT ordinance. Well, maybe it is.
2029 Southwest Feimster. I'm here today to tell you about my experience, and I want to comment today that, first of all, everything that we're doing in the beginning of the Pace program is really absolutely good. We're providing homeowners with financing to improve their home. I'm absolutely for that, 100%. I'm against taking away their equities because when they get ready to sell, that becomes a problem. I made a few notes, and I'm not going to use them. I'm going to tell you my experience. I talked to you about this before. I want to let you know what happened. A year and a half ago, the issues don't surface when the homeowner gets the loan. The contractors benefit from it, the Realtors benefit from it. There's no problem when that loan is made. The problems surface when the house is sold. Now, in my 40 years in this business, I've never received a phone call from anybody from Pace. And I know it's a very new program, so obviously, in the last few years, never. I've had four transactions. Every one of them was horrible. And the reason they're horrible is because the title companies don't pick up this lien. This is assessed to the property tax roll. So it's a hidden lien. It doesn't show up the immediate time that they record the loan. The title company assesses a prelim. That's a document that you guys all know that tells you what's against that property. The homeowner reads it, the Realtor reads it. There's nothing on there that says there's a Pace loan. That's why this is a horrible way for a homeowner to find out he's got to get that loan paid off. If it's not paid off, which is my basic experience, they missed it, and a year later, this is the phone call. Hello, Sam, this is Dorsey. Listen, my payment went from 700 a month to 3,700 a month. What's going on? I said, I don't know. Let me find out. I called the title company. Did you guys miss the loan? No, we did not. That title was clear. There's no reason that that's a problem. You have a serious issue here, and it's not with us, Sam. They missed the tax assessment because it was during the time that the loan was put on, and by the time it got to the tax roll, the title company had not pulled it up. It still does not show up as a loan. It shows up as additional tax assessments, which could be anything. Could be a permit to paint the house, as little as money as you can. That assessment could show up on a tax roll. Melrose is another way that they do this. It's just a terrible way of doing it. Bank of America was the new lender. I called Bank of America and I gave them a big surprise. Guess what, boys? You have a second. You no longer have a first. What are you talking about, Mr. Shaka? We have sold that loan to Fannie Mae. I said, well, then you committed a little fraud here. Now, that's a big word that I'm using here today. So the only take it by the surface of what actually happened. The lender did not know that there was an assessment on the tax roll. He made the new loan on the property. That loan that was made was not a first trustee. Immediately, they came to the county and paid off the assessment. Then they filed a claim with the title company because the title company missed it. Today, it's over a year, that case is still under scrutiny. The problem that I have, and I know I'm out of time, but I have to tell you, is that we need more controls after the loan is put on by Pace. And that's why Bakersfield is in the process of repealing it.
Question, Sam. Can that be on the Realtors' list? I mean, okay, nothing came up on the title. Let's check, I mean, do the Realtors check the property tax assessment before, you know, while they're working with somebody?
Typically, Amy, what happens is the tax assessment shows up on the prelim, and it shows what the payment was. And that's how we look at it. Now, we all know that the tax assessment will change once title passes. Usually, it goes to 1% of the sales price. So when we're working with a seller or a buyer, we let the buyer know that his taxes will increase to 1% of your purchase price. So that's the only indicator that we have on the prelim. It is not on there. It is a serious problem.
But can that be requested? Can that be an additional request? You know, I'm selling a house now, and there's a lot of paperwork. So can that be an additional request to protect your buyer?
What Pace needs to do is to change the mechanics of this so that it'll show up that we can see it at the time of sale. We're not seeing it, and that's why Bakersfield has all these problems. And the reason we don't have very many here, to be honest with you, we don't have that many sales with Pace programs on them yet. They're not coming up. I haven't seen them personally. I know that I was asked to come here to explain my position. I'm not against the loan. I'm not against the contractors making money and moving the economic trend towards moving money here and taking it there. I think it's great. The problem is, when they sell, we're putting the homeowners in a bad position. Thank you. I'm sorry I went over.
Thank you. And Sam, as usual, you show up with paparazzi, there's cameras flashing.
I know. But no more lien.
All right. Next, please come forward, state your name and address.
Adrian Herrera, 25164, Road 44, Tulare. I agree with Sam too. I think these guys, the program itself offers a good, you know, program for these people who can't do these certain things. But I'm just going to share an experience I had during a real estate transaction. And so I had a client who had lost their AC in the middle of summer, and of course, it's hot here. So, you know, you got to get the, they have kids and family. And they have the check, they have the HVAC check by technician, and they determined that they needed to have it replaced. So of course, no money, not the best of credit. They stumbled across the HERO loaner, Pace loaner, I think it was HERO was the program. So they call up the contractor, and they determined that the AC needs to be obviously replaced, but at the same time, they have a wood shake roof. And so they say, hey, you know, let's do the roof too, whatever that conversation might have been. Maybe it was wood shake, so I mean, great, might as well replace it, right? And I think that's great that they offered them these, you know, to do the roof and to do the AC because they financially couldn't do it or couldn't go outside of their, this credit or ability for them, you know, these interest rates that they're offering for this program. But the home was 1,600 square feet, okay? And the cost that was given to them to replace the HVAC and to repair the roof was over $27,000. I mean, I've done a few flips in my life, and I do do permits on my roofs, okay? They're replaced. A 1,600-square-foot roof, I don't think I've ever paid over $9,000 for, to remove the wood shake and put on one of these cool roofs, or, you know, whatever it might take. And as far as an HVAC goes, that house is 1,600 square feet. It needs maybe, I think, what is it, 500 square feet for one ton? So you're probably looking at maybe, what, $5,000 for a new unit? That's $14,000, $15,000 for an HVAC replacement and a roof. But theirs was over $27,000. Well, their hands are tied behind the back. It's, they're sweating in the heat, and they're offering an option to do this here alone. I mean, they're not going to say no. And they were, you know, and as far as when it came to disclosures, my clients never had a problem. They were like, yeah. But did they have any other option as far as, do you know the true cost of this replacement? No. And that's really, I think that's really what the problem I see with this is not the fact that they're offering these programs to people who can't afford it, is what's the true cost? You guys are marking up the cost. On top of marking up the cost, to the extreme, you're also charging this huge interest rate to do that. So pretty much that's, and again, with Sam too, I never received a call from any HERO or Pace loan during a sale of this when it was, neither did my sellers. So for what that's worth, I appreciate you guys' time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thank you for your time, Board. My name's Ron Hayes. I'm with Hayco Construction. We do mainly roofing. We've been with Pace since its inception, a couple of years now. And this is often the only financing option for our customers. We used to carry unsecured financing programs, but we've gotten rid of all those because the rates were way too high, and this is a much fairer program for our customers. I've used Pace to finance our projects 17 times this year, four of them in July alone. And we've never had a problem with any of our customers and the program. And I'd like to see it expanded here in the county, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Next speaker, please. Come forward and state your name and address.
Good morning, everyone. My name's Darlene Ochterberg, and I live here in Vistalia at 649 West Princeton Court. And I am a 73-year-old, 73-year-young widow who has had to learn to do a lot of things on my own. My air conditioning was out for over a year, and I could not afford to replace it because there, and I went and checked with numerous contractors on getting this up. But because my air conditioning unit was 22 years old, there was work to be done to bring it up to code because so many things had changed during those years, which meant money upfront that I could not afford to do. So I not only have my dog, but I fostered dogs. So we had a really hard time with using just fans. And the HERO program was my savior for this. And the HERO program was my savior for this. And I had never heard of them before. I one day went into Home Depot, and that's where I heard of them and followed up. And everything was explained to me thoroughly. All of the costs, all of the financing and knowing. And I have not made my first payment yet, not till November, when the taxes come due. But I did the thing that people should do. And I do have a home warranty with a company. But because, they don't pay the, I guess, remodeling, you know, the bringing up to code. They don't pay those expenses. So what they did was give me, issue me a check for a certain amount of money because I wasn't going to use their contractors' their services. And I opened up a savings account with that money. And then I'm putting the money in every month because I chose the 10-year plan instead of longer to pay it off. And that is how I am affording it. And otherwise, I would not have been able to do this. So all I can say is I thoroughly would encourage you to make this available to everybody in Tulare County, especially people who are seniors and who are low income. And we have to go, you know, for what we can do.
Question?
Thank you.
Yes.
Do you recall, if you don't mind my asking, how much you had to finance or you're paying for the new unit? And how much the home warranty company gave you for the old unit?
Okay, I don't remember what the total is on it, but the warranty company gave me 1,475. Yeah, which, and other places wanted 1,900, and one place wanted 2,200. So it didn't cover much, but it sure covered most of my first payment, which is coming in November. In fact, three, at least three, four, seven.
And you say in your letter here that it's, you're now ready to make affordable monthly payments? So you're okay with the payment amount that will be coming in addition?
Yes, and I chose it because that, the amount of each month, I put in that savings account. So that it's there because knowing upfront what my payments were going to be, I could make that decision and make that move to take care of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Thank you very much for your comment. Next speaker, please come forward.
Good afternoon, Board. My name's Chris Rude from La Mesa, San Diego County. I've been asked to come up and just to clarify the way to confirm a PACE assessment is attached to a property. It will be recorded on title with the special tax assessments, as well as there are other ways. There is a public property report, which will reflect the assessment. The city or the tax, the tax bill will also reflect the assessment. And we do realize that what PACE is, it's something new in an industry that's established. So in order to find out if there is an assessment on the property, simply ask the homeowner how the improvements were done. Easy way to find out. But there are multiple ways to confirm if there is an assessment attached to the property, which is part of what my team does. As Robbie introduced me earlier, I am part of the HERO, or HERO Property Advisors. We actively outreach to our property owners and their listing agents when the properties do come on the market, assist with those questions for buyers and sellers. So walking them through, whether it's an agent's first listing or their 10th, we're there to support whatever they will need. That's it.
Great, thank you very much.
Any questions?
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Steve Williamson with Visalia Roofing and Construction. I would like to say that I've got two jobs going on right now with California First, with the PACE program. And both of those come to me saying, listen, we are approved. We've got an application number from California First stating that they're ready to do this. They're looking for the contractors, looking for approved contractors to do it. And we've taken care of it for them that way, which seems to work out very well for homeowners. I've also did one last year for some people, for a homeowner that did without an air conditioner or heater for four years and couldn't afford it. And this is financing that has made it available for them to put a roof on and get an air conditioner on. Another one I just finished up was for a single mom that had a shake roof that was being turned down because of insurance, wasn't going to renew their insurance. And they got the affordable PACE program financing for that also. And it's worked out really well for my business and homeowners that I know about. Thank you, my pleasure.
Question, Steve? And I'm not questioning your practices. Do you charge the same amount for that roof that if somebody without the PACE program assistance?
Yes, I do.
Came to you, the same amount?
Yes, I do.
Awesome, okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Good morning, Supervisor. Rick Williams. I'm a Realtor here in town and serve on a few of the different commissions for the board with the Air District, speaking as a Realtor today and also the property owner. So I'll give the two direct experiences I've had. First of all, is on one of our rentals, we had a call out of Fresno. We can do the new cool roofing for you. It was fantastic, they made it sound really, really good. I set up, I took the meeting because I wanted to see what they were going to say. We met him Sunday after church. The salesman came down from Fresno, took a look at the house. It's about a 1,350 square foot home. He looked at it and he said, yeah, we can do this. He said ballpark's going to be around $40,000. I thought, well, that's just a little on the steep side. We actually did get a roof put on locally, wrote a check for it for $700,000, and it was cool roofing. That's my own personal experience with this program. Another one is with a client that had a huge, huge solar lien against his property, well over $50,000. Was sold his program based on the law before it was changed, that he would actually be able to not only have no energy bill, but be able to sell energy back to the utility company, as we know that all went away. So now he's paying money. He owes, it was about $54,000 over and above. So basically, he could not sell his house. So his house went off the market, they're still in their home, and they're going to be there for a long, long time. There are a lot of good programs out there. And there's no reason why we couldn't be looking at bringing in incentivized programs into Tulare County that don't require messing with people's property tax assessments or putting in the county in the position of having to look like they're endorsing these kind of programs, which is where we end up if we actually set this up. If you took the PA out of that program, it'd be a great program because who doesn't want clean energy? And if you take the PA out of this program, the property assessed part of it, then it's just free market and buyer beware. If they pay too much, they pay too much. But if they, but to pay too much, have it affect your property taxes and your property values, long range is horrible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Morning. My name's Mark Avidian, Avidian Properties. We're a real estate company here in Tulare County. I was 2013 President of the Association of Realtors Tulare County. Our company does approximately 7% of all the transactions in Tulare County. We've never once been contacted by the outreach. I was also the 2016 Regional Chair for seven Association of Realtors regions in the Central Valley to the State Association. And we meet with the president, we have three meetings a year as Assistant Regional Chair in 2015 and the Regional Chair in 2016. Of the three meetings per year, we have several meetings with the President of the Association and the Executive Committee with our regional chairs. And we have to talk about the biggest problem in real estate in our areas. And several of the regional chairs who have had this program for several years, they say it's the number one problem in real estate in our markets. And as they said, 40% of the sales, this was from their mouth, were issues upon the sale of a home. We don't have very many sales that have had PACE yet because it hasn't been in existence very long. And the numbers were small in Kern County because it hasn't been there very long. But think about 40% of your constituents who will have problems selling a home. That's a percentage that PACE gave. They also, if you notice, most of the people that came up and speak weren't members of our community. They brought them in from all over. Why is that? Who counts? Them that are making money off of this program and came from all kinds of different areas to line their pockets? Or your constituents? Do you want 40% of the people here to have an issue when they sell a house? If you vote for that, that's what you're getting. That's why it's the largest problem in selling real estates where it's been established. And so I urge you to vote no and consider your constituents instead of the out-of-town people making money on this.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please come forward.
Good morning. Robin Stearns, 200 East Cedar, Exeter, California. I was on Exeter City Council for eight years and the mayor of Exeter for four years. But I'm here today before you in behalf of the Realtors because I've been a Realtor in Tulare County since 2002. I have not had any immediate problem with PACE myself, but I have had a family member, which was in Clovis. And they had a new roof installed and a solar system installed at their house. They had to move. They didn't have a choice because of a job. And so their first issue was when they got their Edison bill at the end of the year, they had been told that they would not receive any electricity bill. And they ended up with a $5,000 bill because they did not get enough solar panels to offset that. That's not what they were told when it was installed. But then when they went to sell their house, they could not. They had to do a short sale because they owed too much on it because of this lien that PACE had put on their home. It made them upside down. So instead of being able to sell and move and purchase another home, they ended up having to do a short sale, which has now ruined their credit for at least three years, and they're renting. This is a couple that had been married for 27 years and has two boys in college. That should have never have happened. With disclosures, unfortunately, you know, even in real estate, we talk and we talk and we talk with people, explaining everything. I realized PACE said that they have 20 pages of disclosures. I hate to say it, but after a couple pages, people are like deers in the headlights. You really have to be able to trust your Realtor and know that they're being honest with you so that you understand what is actually happening and what you are signing. It's unfortunate, but that just doesn't always happen in every situation. And I think that is part of the problem with this is that people don't understand what they're getting into. And then when they have to do something like sell their house, they can't. I appreciate your time. Thank you for having us.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Good morning. Ed Morton, Tulare County Association of Realtors, President for 2017. We just wanted to come in, touch base. Thanks for listening to us. When we get into the 650, approximately 650 loans, it's nothing compared to already with Bakersfield at 4,000 and the problems they're having. And we're seeing more and more of these problems. One of the key flaws is there's no financial oversight. There's nobody really watching these guys. The defaults occur at the first mortgage level as the PACE lien payment is added to your impounds. So once, let's say your property taxes go up, and they don't go up for a while. Takes about a year for it to be reassessed. Well, your payment goes up. You can't make your pay, you can't make your property taxes, payment on your property taxes. So your payment goes up because the bank will add that to your impounds. And all of a sudden, your payment is through the roof. And then that's when the default process starts. We also believe that the Tulare County Tax Assessor should not be a debt collector. They're not even being paid to collect this debt. There's no way that the tax collector should be a debt collector, period. The foreclosure exempt, as you know, the property taxes are the only lien that survive a foreclosure. This is a super lien program, super priority lien program. And when you add to the taxes, it's for the public good. Sewer, water, garbage, and schools. Measured by an equal and balanced benefit to all. How does this do this when you run into these problems and you could lose your home? We don't know what this market's going to do. If we all had a crystal ball, we'd be in a lot better shape. But what if this market turns? Now, that's just a what-if. And once again, we're right back into this situation we were in the early 2000s, where you owe more on your home than what it's worth. And there's no income verification for any of these loans or anything like that. You must have some equity or some things like that in your home. But this thing can turn, and you would end up upside down on your home. And I think the other thing is it prices starter homes, start people who want to buy starter homes, out of the market. Let's say there's a PACE loan on it, and they qualify for a certain amount. Once you discover these loans on the property, it blows their ratios completely out of the water. So you might not even find these liens until halfway through the escrow process, and it ends up killing a deal. What we would like to see is a halt to the PACE program in Tulare County till things may be able to be revised. It's a good program, except for what it can cause homeowners. There's benefit there. And we are in no way, shape, or form against any kind of usable, reliable, and affordable clean energy. Thank you.
Real quick, Ed, before you leave, I, just because you're here on behalf of your association, a question that I would have. My understanding, and staff, you can correct if I'm wrong, I'm looking at Mike Washam, is, and I was going to ask at the end of public comment about this, but is there a way that Tulare County, in adopting this program, can make our own requirements of the program within the unincorporated Tulare County? If there were some specifics that the Real Estate Association would request, that we could actually add to Tulare County's program to enhance consumer protections if this were to move forward? Just curious of that question.
Well, I suppose we could add whatever we wanted to, to it, just to say that SB 243 is currently passing through, which requires, it's already passed the Senate, requires those income verifications and all of those pieces of it. So that's, anything that the state legislates will be applicable to all.
So basically, what Ed is saying is that, you know, waiting until this gets a little bit more established would be something that they would be recommending? And it seems like there's legislation at the state, which I think some of the legislation that was implemented in 2016 requiring the truth in lending type statements would have addressed some of the concerns that have been raised already had those transactions occurred after that legislation's implementation. I'm just looking to you, Ed, as to what your suggestion would be. If this were to move forward, what do you need to see in order for that to be comfortable?
Well, the program's in its infancy. That's why we're not seeing a lot here. We're seeing down in Kern County, it's really starting to come through, and there's a lot more problems surfacing. So I would say to halt the program. Let's take a look, let's see what kind of new legislation is coming through to see how to help people. And go from there. I would really like to see a halt. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Any additional? Any additional comments from anyone who has not spoken today? Okay. Anybody on the board have any questions? I'll bring it back to the board, closed public comment period. If the board has questions, you can go ahead and ask any at this time.
Mike, obviously we can because it's something Bakersfield is doing. If we were to implement this and there started to be issues, we could rescind it.
Yes, all the pace programs are.
Any additional comments, questions? Supervisor Crocker?
I have a question first. You mentioned SB two forty-two and you skipped over AB two seventy-one. Could you just go over that briefly, what that proposes?
Yeah, on AB two seventy-one, I believe that's where if it becomes default that the again, this is in process, it's not been finalized. If the tax collector is authorized to pull it off the tax rolls so it doesn't get the tax penalties that most default for property taxes would be up to eighteen percent, I believe. I think the tax collector is here and she could probably have better addressed that, but the county association, the state association of tax collectors is one of the sponsors of that particular legislation.
In other words, it wouldn't be any penalty.
It wouldn't add, it wouldn't add.
The state is going to put the money up to.
Right. Those penalties, there wouldn't be those penalties ultimately assessed against the property.
But that hasn't happened yet.
That's in process right now. Yeah.
Any additional comments or questions from board members? This is an action item, so.
Have this matter set for close session.
I have some, I have some comments.
Absolutely. Feel free to, feel free to make comments, question, this is the time for discussion right now.
I said we do have this matter set for closed session if there's a need to consult with council.
I mean, we can consult in open session too, right? Yeah.
Go ahead. Go for what, your comments supervisor.
Well, this certainly is a stickler of a situation. Obviously, it's pace is a good program. It's worked. I know all our incorporated cities have been using it. When I was on the city council, we adopted it and in the nine years that I was on there, I don't recall any issues happening. Certainly, it's not a perfect program as we've heard today. I do have some, some questions with some of the charges, you know, that are applied to the home buyers as far as cost of a product through this program or not through this program, but through the contractors, some contractors. Unfortunately, we have predatory contractors, we have predatory everything nowadays, so it's again, the buyer beware. I do like that we can rescind it should we decide to adopt it. I would like to see some of the cold calling and the knocking on the doors. I know you can't control that, but again, I feel like when somebody knocks on your door and they start to tell you about new windows and all, in the back of their mind, they're really selling the pace program to folks. I think on the Realtor side, as I mentioned to Mr. Shaka, maybe a little bit more investigation can be done to make sure before something is, you know, although you get that title report, dig a little deeper and find out if there isn't a pace assessment. So again, it's not perfect, but I don't feel like right now throwing the baby out with the bathwater. There is some legislation that's going through. Right now, I can see supporting this, letting the county adopt the program and seeing how it works while this legislation is going through and also always having that, that option of rescinding it should, should it not be a good program for us.
Supervisor Ennis Crocker?
You've got the majority of the county, so if you take all the incorporated cities and Farmers' Deal just signed on, they're already on it anyway. So there's your major population. The only people we're talking about today is in the unincorporated areas. And like I say, if it isn't what it's supposed to be and these rules and regulations don't come into effect to make it what it should be, then we can rescind it.
Supervisor Crocker?
My biggest issue with this is that the past board supervisors meeting in two thousand and fifteen, the board members already approved the precedent of being a part of residential pace. And really, we are putting other pace programs at a disadvantage. We are creating a monopoly where only one pace provider is allowed to operate in unincorporated areas of Tulare County. Competition was brought up, that competition is a positive thing. It encourages innovation, encourages efficiencies and better cost savings. And so I think that's something that I, that really I want to see consistency. Consistency where we are, we are allowing for all programs. If that's a determination that the past board has taken that pace is okay, then we need to make sure that we are having a level playing field for all pace programs. I think that as to points that were already mentioned, all Tulare County cities have one pace program or another in the form, and I think that that's a strong indicator of what also needs to be there. Ultimately, I don't disagree with individuals and I think a lot of the points were taken that we need to encourage that the individuals get multiple bids on projects, that they are doing their due diligence. But ultimately, that is, individuals need to take personal responsibility and that's, that's really where, where I feel that I don't necessarily disagree, but whether or not that's the county's position to take the responsibility for individuals, that's, that's where I, where I differ. And then lastly, Tulare County and myself, I am the representative on RCRC's board. RCRC has an auxiliary corporation affiliate, the Golden State Finance Authority, where the RCRC board with thirty-three of the thirty-five members, Tulare County being one of the, one of the non-members on the GSFA, serve as a board that governs one of the pace programs. And that is a group of individuals. I don't know that you can find thirty-three more conservative individuals in that group. It's, you know, rural counties, they do their due diligence and, and, you know, we've got a seat at the table possibly for making sure that, that for that particular program, that we are making sure that there are, the best practices are implemented. And that's all my comments that I have.
Okay. And I will just add a few comments. I was a part of the board that did adopt California First in Tulare County, but again, at that point in time, I believe that was in two thousand and fifteen, pace type financing was in its infancy. It was a new program. It was the first in Tulare County. And I completely agree with Supervisor Crocker, there needs to be a level playing field and we can't limit it to just one pace provider. However, I do think that there is some pending legislation that's going to address many of the concerns that we have about the program. And so rather than adopting it today and seeing if the legislation that comes down and holds all pace providers to a new standard works and then rescinding it if it doesn't, I would rather see us, not to kick the can down the road, but because there's so much that's changing that addresses the concerns that have been raised today, we may be better off doing that and waiting until, you know, if we set a date certain in the future for that adoption based on seeing the effect of that legislation, seeing that that does address the concerns that have been raised and may be affecting our property owners here in the county currently under the California First program. I think that's an option that we have too, but that's kind of my thought.
Question from Mike. Mike, where, what is the status of the pending legislation? I mean, how far is it? Are they voting on it tomorrow?
Each of them are moving along. The Assembly Bill passed Assembly and is now going to committee and the Senate and vice versa. Another one's passed the Senate and is on the way to. So if they both progress and move forward, you would look at probably approval this fall, the governor signing it in September, October, and probably would take effect January first of next year if provided it all moves forward at that level.
That was my only question.
Okay. Any further comments or questions from board members? If not, the chair will entertain a motion. I, you know, I, I think I can also, I need to also make the comment that pace programs are definitely a tool for those who do not have the means to finance improvements to their home. And I don't think that it's, should come across at all that it's discriminatory to not allow this because I think that every homeowner should have the ability through any means that is available to them, whichever they choose, to make the necessary improvements to their home. And so I think it is a tool in the toolbox. I would definitely, I'm definitely supportive of the program on the surface. It's just the issues that have, many of which have been raised today and there's certainly other issues, obviously Kern County's rescinding their program. And in, at the state level, there's additional legislation targeting some of those issues that I think just flat out adopting it today would be maybe a little bit premature, but and in terms of a level playing field, I would actually be supportive of having, holding California First to the same standard that we hold everyone else to. And if we do, if the board chooses not to go forward today, we should look at bringing that resolution back in the future, but it's up to the board.
I would just soon, I would just soon go forward with it and see what happens down the road.
Yeah, in five months.
I mean, we, you're not going to get everybody on board on anything, but it could be beneficial to some folks. I would just soon, myself move forward with it.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hey, well, you took, you took my job. Supervisor Shucklin, is that a motion supervisor?
That's a motion, yes.
Okay, I have a motion by Supervisor Ennis?
Second.
A second by Supervisor Crocker?
Clarification, there's three items, item twenty-nine, thirty and thirty-one.
And would this motion address all three items supervisor because they're all different programs? For all three items, okay. Motion by Supervisor Ennis, a second by Supervisor Crocker, please vote. Motion passes three to one with Supervisor Worley not voting because he is not in attendance at today's meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
All right. That takes care of items twenty-eight, or I'm sorry, twenty-nine, thirty and thirty-one. We will now move on to take up item thirty-two, which is a request from the Human Resources Development Department to approve the tentative agreement and authorize such changes to the memorandum of understanding between the County of Tulare and the Tulare County Professional Firefighters Association.
Good morning Chairman and members of the board, K. Ospata and Council Peters. The item before you is a request to approve the tentative agreement between the county and the Tulare County Professional Firefighters Association, TCPFA. This is agreement for two years. It serves one hundred and ten allocated positions in the fire department, which are the captains, the administrative captains, lieutenants and the fire apparatus engineers. Major provisions are a cost of living increase for three percent for each of the two years of the term of the agreement. Some increases to the employee plus spouse and family cost for health insurance, continuation of the sick leave buyback program, the addition of the deferred compensation plan match by the county to the employees. It's a four, four, one up to a limit of fifteen hundred dollar match by the county. An increase in uniform allowance of a hundred and fifty dollars annually, an increase in life insurance from ten thousand dollars to forty thousand dollars. The total cost for the two years is estimated at four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
Okay. Any questions or comments from board members? I do have a public comment request form from Adam Fanning. Adam, you've been very patient. I bet you didn't anticipate it taking this long to get to this point, but.
I'm just going to let Rhonda stay up.
Go ahead.
This is, this is all, this is all, all positive, obviously. So I'm on duty today, but I'm just here representing our Tulare County Professional Firefighters. Obviously, probably since the dawn of MOUs, never has there been a perfect one. I don't think we can ever find perfection and kind of the old adage, you're never going to make any, everybody happy. But, you know, with ninety-nine percent of our voting members approving this contract in the midst of being out of county, in the midst of our great flood of two thousand and seventeen, thankfully, with all of our electronic devices, we were able to get in contact with our members, get them the information that Rhonda and her staff had provided us and, you know, within a weekend, we were able to get our, to get our vote and been able to make that happen. I've had the opportunity to been, be at the table for pretty much all but one of our MOU's since forming in two thousand and seven. MOU time comes around, it almost feels like a family reunion's getting back together, Rhonda and Eric and everybody. But by far, this has probably been the most efficient and, I mean, dare I say, enjoyable processes. We had a real big swing in our, in our last MOU. I think we really came back to center and I, I think we're almost done in under five meetings, which two of them were discussing the ground rules. So I don't think we've ever been done as quickly as we could. Myself and my membership definitely feel this is a direct result of the positive and productive labor management relations that we have going on with ourselves, with HR, with chief and his staff throughout the year and on an ongoing basis. We're, you know, with the common goals and objectives, that goes a long way in the fire service. We're all, we're all heading in the same direction and know where we want to go. We both continue to work together, communicate openly and effectively. We're all working to support the missions of the county, support the missions of the fire department and support the mission of our chief. And I think this was a shining example this year of the cooperative effort and the great management team that we have at headquarters and brought all this together. So I would definitely like to thank Rhonda and Eric and her team at HR. Shaleen, she's not here, but I don't remember the law firm she's with, but I'm sure it's about seven or eight names, so something, something, something and somebody. It was great to have her back at the table. Her professionalism and knowledge, I think, was definitely instrumental, especially, we also had a new negotiator this year and they just meshed amazingly well. I'm sure a lot of things were able to be just done and handled, you know, between them and then of course, Mr. Spata of the board for your support of this contract. So thank you very much.
Group hug.
Yeah. I'm not hugging you, Shucklin. Anybody else have any additional questions or comments at this time regarding this item?
Family reunion.
All right. Bring it back to the board for action. I have a motion by Supervisor Ennis, a second by Supervisor Shucklin, please vote. Motion passes unanimously four to zero with Supervisor Worley not voting because he is not in attendance. I will now move on to item thirty-three, which is a request from the Human Resources and Development Department to approve the tentative agreement and authorize such changes to the MOU between County of Tulare and the Service Employees International Union representing bargaining units one, two, three, four, six and seven.
Okay. Chairman, this item before you represents three thousand, one hundred and seventy-three allocations, allocated positions that are under SEIU. The proposed agreement is for a two-year term with a cost of living increase of three percent in the first year and two percent in the second year. Your board is being asked to approve an increase in county contribution for dependent healthcare coverage of an additional twenty dollars per pay period for those areas shown on the agenda item, employee plus spouse, employee plus children and employee plus child, family. This also continues sick leave buyback. It adds the new county contribution match for the deferred compensation plan for SEIU. We have a provision number nine, which is in regards to the Sheriff's Department Emergency Dispatch Center that we have began discussions with SEIU on looking for assignment of shift change that we have agreed if this, if this term of this agreement and MOU is approved, we would be going back to the table within the next thirty days to confer on the impacts of the shift change. This also incorporates side letters of action that was previously approved between the last MOU being adopted, so it will now be included in this MOU version if approved. So it will now be included in this MOU version, if approved. And it also has reopeners for our Flores case decision, should we need to come back to the table. Total impact over the two years is ten million, seven hundred forty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars. Request approval of the tentative agreement incorporation into the MOU.
Thank you very much, Rhonda. Any questions, comments from board members? Open up for public comment, is there anybody here wishing to speak related to this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for action and/or.
Who's approval?
All right, we have a motion by Supervisor Shucklin, a second by Supervisor Ennis, please vote. Motion passes unanimously, four to zero, with Supervisor Worley not voting because he is not in attendance today. I will now move on to item number thirty-four, which is a request from Board of Supervisor's staff to consider, modify as needed, and approve the responses to the 2016-2017 final grand jury report entitled, "Did Your Vote Count in the 2016 General Election?"
Good morning, because it's still morning, Julieta Martinez, Chief of Staff, Board of Supervisors. Directions that I will read will apply to both item thirty-four and thirty-five, but we will start with this report. The 2016-17 Grand Jury Final Report includes a report that requests responses from your Board. The draft responses were included with the item, and you have updated versions on the dais, and there was printouts for the public. For all reports, respondents must address each finding stating either agreement or disagreement. The response must also address each recommendation stating if it will be implemented or not. If further analysis is needed, it must be completed within six months. I will review the first draft response for your consideration citing the recommended determinations. And please let me know if you have any questions or modifications. And I will read the entire response for the record. The first one for your consideration today is entitled, "Did Your Vote Count in the 2016 General Election", which includes one finding and two recommendations. The first finding and response is as follows, finding two states, some polling sites did not have sufficient ballots. And I clarify, it's called finding two, not because there's two of them, but that's the one we were directed to answer. So finding two states, some polling sites did not have sufficient ballots. The response, the Board agrees with this finding. Regarding the recommendation for this report, recommendation one states that, "Ensure that the person hired is a knowledgeable and experienced registrar of voters." Response suggested, the recommendation has been implemented. Michelle Baldwin was appointed registrar of voters on March twenty-eight, 2017. Michelle began her career with the County of Tulare in nineteen eighty-eight and brings a wealth of knowledge from working with almost every county department in her role as chief clerk to the position of registrar of voters. Please note, we're adding an S there. She has served in high-level leadership roles, such as the President of the California Clerk of the Board of Supervisors Association, which add to the already extensive skill set she holds. As interim registrar of voters, she began to research methods to improve the efficiencies and processes of the way business is done in the department through technology and other resources. Michelle began a public outreach process to understand how the next election cycle can exceed expectations. The Board has great confidence in her ability to keep the elections department improving over time. Recommendation two states that, fill all authorized department vacancies. Response suggested, the recommendation requires further analysis. The Board directed the registrar of voters to complete a comprehensive review of the department. The registrar will further evaluate department needs, policies, and procedures. The department head will continue to work with the county administrative office on vacancies and will report back to the Board before year end. It's requested that you approve this draft response with any changes noted and any clerical corrections, and authorize the Chairman to sign the response letter.
Any questions or comments from board members? Members of the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for discussion and interaction.
Thirty-four and thirty-five.
This is thirty-four.
Well, this was just thirty-four.
Just thirty-four first.
Thirty-four, okay, move for approval.
Second, I have a motion by Supervisor Ennis, a second by Supervisor Crocker, please vote. Motion passes unanimously, three to zero, with Supervisor Worley not voting because he is not in attendance, and Supervisor Shucklin not voting because she's not present at the dais at this time.
So I will go ahead and move forward with item thirty-five. Again, I will read the finding, recommendation, and responses for the record. So, for your consideration today, entitled, "Drought, Agriculture, and Retirement: How Are They Connected", this report includes one recommendation. The recommendation or response is as follows. Recommendation one states, TESERA continued to review and modify the nineteen-year plan to ensure the funding needs of the retirement plan are being met. Suggested response, TESERA is a separate legal entity which ensures that the funding needs of the retirement plan are being met. Thus, in large part, the recommendation is not within the purview of the Board of Supervisors. To the extent that the Board of Supervisors can participate in this process, the recommendation has not yet been implemented, but will be implemented in the future. The Board of Supervisors has established a Strategic Finance Ad-hoc Committee, which has been tasked with reviewing retirement and unfunded liability. A supervisor also sits on the TESERA Board and works with various individuals to review and analyze employee and employer contributions. The working group, along with the Board, has already identified steps to ensure the success of the plan. A new retirement tier, tier four, for new employees was created to help maintain sustainable benefit levels. The Board also plans to set aside funding, not from reserves, to a pension stabilization fund each year. The Strategic Finance Ad-hoc Committee will recommend steps to reach a goal of meeting the requirement at a stable and predictable level going forward. The Board of Supervisors has a good relationship with the TESERA Board and expects to continue this cooperation in the near future. It is requested that you approve the draft response with any changes you'd like to add or note and any clerical corrections, and authorize the Chairman to sign the response letters.
Any questions or comments, Supervisor Crocker?
I just want to thank Julieta for doing both of the last item and this item. Separate from this, but, but related, you know, we've, we're dealing with, we're, we're doing a deep dive on our retirement system through the Strategic Ad-hoc Finance Committee. And, you know, as, as a, as a Board of Supervisors, we have three positions that we can allocate on TESERA's Board. And the, the practice currently is one Board member and two public members that, that we, as a Board, appoint. And as, as those two individuals, as their term comes up, I think that, that having a stronger presence from the Board of Supervisors with direct involvement from supervisors is important, just from the fact that we're dealing with two hundred and forty approximately million-dollar shortfall in unfunded liability. And we are the primary funder of TESERA. And, you know, we've, we've got to make sure that, that, and I, and I, it's nothing to take away from Chairman Vanderpool as far as what he's doing.
Thanks.
I, I think you're doing a fantastic job, and, and I'm glad that you didn't appoint me to that Board. I really am. But I, but I just think that the, the issues require more involvement in addition to what our Chairman's already doing. That, I, I think it would be beneficial to lend support to our Chairman on TESERA Board. And that's just food for thought as, as that comes up in the future.
What do you think, Supervisor Ennis, do you have any comments?
No, I don't have any comments. I think, I think Kyler, Kyler did a good job covering what he thought, and I, I kind of go along with him.
Okay, well, we can, we can address some of the items that were brought up, besides his lack of confidence in myself at a future date.
I was clear that I liked what you were doing.
But anyways, yeah, with, with that being said, that is something we can address in the, in the future, I believe. But the letter is up for approval at this time, and I will entertain a motion. Who approves?
I'll second that.
I have a motion from Supervisor Crocker, a second by Supervisor Ennis.
They'll get a good presentation, thank you.
Please vote. Motion passes unanimously, three to zero, with Supervisor Worley not voting because he is not in attendance, and Supervisor Shucklin not voting because she's not present on the dais. I will now take up item number thirty-six, which is a request to receive a report from the county administrative officer regarding a potential bicycle pedestrian path along Rocky Hill Drive extending from Spruce Avenue to Yokele Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, ladies and gentlemen. The matter before you is entitled, "The Rocky Hill Bicycle and Pedestrian Path Playing in Feasibility Study." The proposed study area is approximately three-mile stretch along Rocky Hill Drive from Spruce Avenue to Yokele Drive. The proposed study entails six elements, first, a CEQA exemption, a project description, an identification of project opportunities and constraints, the development of production costs, including construction costs and maintenance costs, the outline of a project schedule, as well as any other relevant item that merits consideration. The Tulare County Association of Government, TCAG, as we affectionately refer to it as, stepped forward to recommend funding the study. They will retain the consultant using the RFP process. The county will be deemed the client and thus will review and determine whether to accept this study as its work product. We will put together an intergovernmental team that will coordinate and cooperate, as we do so well with TCAG. There was, will be no net county cost in connection with this matter. And in terms of our strategic management plan, it will tend to promote public safety for the pedestrian users and bicyclists along this stretch of road. And in terms of quality of life, it will promote recreation and good health. Accordingly, it is respectfully requested, Mr. Chairman, that you approve the requested action, which is to receive this report, support the proposed study, and direct the CIO to take such action as required by your Board. Thank you.
Any comments or questions? I know Supervisor Crocker is an avid bicyclist in this area, so I hope he's not conflicted by taking this item in the air right now, but go ahead, you can make comments.
Three-speed, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm, I'm very excited about this, and this is something that many constituents have, have brought to my attention, including former Mayor Robin Stearns, who was at the meeting earlier. And we've, we've talked about, you know, there, there's a huge safety issue. She, she walks with, with some of her friends three times a week up there at five-thirty in the morning. And this past week, she counted over twenty other individuals doing that at that early morning stage. Now, granted, the, you know, the, the traffic is probably limited at that time, but, but I, I think it's, it's, it's a very positive thing. And speaking with other individuals throughout the county, this is really a, a regional asset that goes beyond just Exeter, and that, that there are many individuals throughout our, our county that utilize this as, as a great recreational use. So, and not to mention that promotes healthy lifestyle. Maybe perhaps, I would, I think walking, I don't know, the bicycling up Rocky Hill, that's, that's, I'll take a mule, maybe.
All right, and our trail-loving supervisor's not even here to talk about it. So I will open it up to members of the public or our Director of TCAG to comment if he would like to do so. Another avid trail lover and user.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Board. And I would just say, in your neck of the woods is where we taught our kids was on a trail in city of Tulare. But I just want to encourage you, this is a path we've been doing, no pun intended, on dealing with what can be more challenging bike paths, rather than the jump right into the environmental document. We, in effect, do a feasibility study, make sure everything can be done and is reasonable. We're also doing this when it looks at going from Visalia to Exeter. We, as TCAG, we won't fund the environmental study till this type of thing is done. So I encourage you, and also just note, as of last night, Woodlake passed the measure or amendment, which creates some flexibility. And what, how that impacts you is that up to five hundred thousand dollars a year, you can now, or you will be able to, in the future, transfer from transit to bike and ped money. So, and that's, that equates to ten million dollars over the next twenty years. So the county will have great flexibility to do great things, and this is the start. And I'm a little biased, we love working with you guys, so especially the CIO. So I think we recommend you move forward with this, so.
All right, that's great, thank you for those comments. Any additional public comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. I think this is a great item, adding a very valuable recreational tool in our county. I do think it is of regional significance. And anywhere that we can continue these efforts throughout the county so that we are not constrained by geography for these trails, i.e., I'd like to see a trail, I know Mr. Coin's working on it, in the Al Paul Allensworth area, maybe connecting the communities and making sort of a recreational enhancement in the area using the wildlife refuge that does exist down there too, because I think that's a, another regional attraction. So, that being said, I will open it up for a motion, direction. Who approves?
Second.
A motion from Supervisor Crocker, a second by Supervisor Ennis, please vote. Motion passes unanimously, three to zero, with Supervisor Shucklin not voting because she's not on the dais, and Supervisor Worley not voting because he is not in attendance. That concludes our regularly scheduled Board meeting, it's an open session. Counsel, do we have need for closed session at this time?
Yes, first, Mr. Chairman, we have a need for an urgency item.
Okay.
So the Board may add an urgency item to the agenda and may take action on it if certain conditions are met. The Board must first publicly identify the item. Second, the Board must vote to add it to the agenda. In order to add it to the agenda, there needs to, there needs to be a finding that the Board needs to take immediate action, and that this need to take immediate action came to the attention of the agency after the agenda was posted. The item here is as follows. The county has an existing declared local emergency due to an accumulation of dead livestock, which was caused by an extreme heat event coupled with a malfunction at a local rendering plant. The local emergency allows ranchers to utilize alternative disposal methods approved by state agencies to avoid potential public health issues. After the agenda was posted, the county was notified that the local rendering plant, whose boiler had malfunctioned, is now fully operational and is accepting and picking up fresh carcasses. Accordingly, the matter, the matter of whether to terminate the local emergency came to the attention of the county after the agenda was posted. Action needs to be taken today because the underlying statute, Government Code Section 8630 Subsection D, requires the Board to proclaim the termination of the local emergency at the earliest possible date that conditions warrant. In addition, the Agricultural Commissioner asserts that until the local emergency is terminated, some local ranchers will continue to utilize emergency disposal methods that are no longer necessary or appropriate. So the Board can debate this and vote on whether or not these two emergency requirements have been met.
Board, Board, Board members, do we feel that the urgency has been met because of the acceptance now by Baker Commodities Rendering Facility of dead carcasses? Or of animal carcasses?
I believe so.
Okay, all right, is that a motion?
Yes, I'm, I move to declare this a urgency item.
Okay, I have a motion by Supervisor Crocker, a second by Supervisor Ennis, please vote. Motion passes unanimously, four to zero, with Supervisor Worley not voting because he is not in attendance today. This is an urgency item, and please don't refer to dead cows as fresh carcasses. I thought that was kind of interesting.
That was Jennifer Takahashi.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
And thank you, Jennifer, for that.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, CIO and County Counsel. I do have the original agenda item for the urgency consideration for the clerk, as well as copies for the Board and for the public. And I won't take long because Counsel, I think, has covered all of the main points. So this is just the official agenda, asking that we terminate the local emergency due to livestock deaths that was declared on June thirtieth, 2017. And with that, I'll answer any questions and.
No, I just moved for approval.
And I hope we don't find ourselves in this situation again with this seemingly never-ending string of hundred-degree days.
Second.
Supervisor Crocker?
So is it typical that we, that we terminate, we, we have to terminate at our next, for, for emergencies? That we have to at our next regularly scheduled meeting?
Typically, I'll help, I'll ask Kenny Counsel to help me here, but typically, we're required by government code to terminate an emergency as immediately as possible.
Okay.
And the issue with this, with this particular one, the reason we brought it as an urgency item is that we do not feel like the alternative disposal methods for the, for the cows should continue.
Gotcha, thank you.
Okay, any additional discussion? The Chair will entertain a motion if there's not any, no additional public comment. Okay, we have a motion standing from Supervisor Ennis, a second by Supervisor Shucklin, please vote. Motion passes unanimously, four to zero, with Supervisor Worley not voting because he is not in attendance today. That now does conclude regular session, I believe, open session. Counsel, do we have? Counsel, do we have need for closed session at this time?
We do, Mr. Chairman. Item A is off calendar. We will be hearing items B through D in closed session. I do not anticipate any announcements out.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Appreciate your attendance and patience during today's lengthy board meeting. Meeting is adjourned.